We're all watching the red light.
Are we in trouble?
No, motor is on.
Have lost.
Exactly.
There we go.
We're conditioned.
All right, good evening and welcome to the City Council Study Session Tuesday, November fifteenth, 2022. First item on the agenda is discussion regarding the status of the FYE 2023 Capital Improvements Program Budget in preparation of the FYE 2024 Capital Improvement Program Budget.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kim Kaufman, the Budget Manager, and this is Jacob Huckabee, the Budget Technician. And we're here to discuss the fiscal year ending 2023 Capital Improvement Program Budget Status in preparation of the fiscal year ending 2024 Capital Improvement Program and the 2025 through 2028 Capital Improvements Plan. So this is the second step in the budget process for next fiscal year. The first step was the Finance Committee's adoption or approval of the budget calendar, which happened at the September meeting. Tonight, we're going over an update on funded projects and having a discussion of Council's priorities for next fiscal year. On February fourteenth, we're going to discuss proposed new projects and midpoint evaluations. And then on May second, we're going to review final proposed plans for fiscal year ending 2024. Capital project sources. The purpose of the Capital Improvement Plan is to support services of municipal government. Projects are identified in the long-range master plans that are reviewed by citizens and adopted by City Council. Priorities are set by Council in their short range or long range. The short-range needs go into a one-year adopted capital budget, and the long-range needs go into the five-year capital plan with proposed schedules of implementation and available funding sources. The CIP plans and budgets are adopted annually, but only the one-year budget appropriates funds, so we can make changes to the five-year plan. Emergencies and high-priority, unanticipated project needs can be added through reallocation or appropriation of funds by Council. So if there are no funds available to appropriate for emergency needs, we can always take funds from appropriated projects and delay the projects or make changes that way. Sources of funding include enterprise revenues, voter-approved general obligation bond proceeds, the seventy percent of one percent capital sales tax, the fifty percent of one percent Norman Forward sales tax and the public safety sales tax, UNP-TIF revenues, intergovernmental grants, room tax, private funds, and other. So we're going to compare a capital project now to capital outlay, and a capital project generally costs more than $100,000. It's relatively fixed or permanent in nature. It has an expected life of more than five years, usually consists of the construction of a new, expanded or improved tangible asset, often takes more than one fiscal year to complete. Contracted services for design, land acquisition, and utility relocations may be required in advance of construction for capital projects. Compared to capital outlay, which consists of expenses for maintaining or purchasing new or replacing tangible assets, which have an expected life of only one to five years. These are one-time occurrences and usually, the expenses usually occur within a single fiscal year. This includes furniture, vehicles, computers, and equipment. Capital outlay paid by the capital fund are expended from the general fund and the Westwood Fund, and then the expenses are reimbursed by the capital fund through transfers. So these are all the funds in the Capital Improvements Program Budget. The special-purpose capital funds are the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, the CDBG Fund, Special Grants Fund, Room Tax Fund, the Public Transportation and Parking Fund, the Capital Fund, the Pay As You Go or Pay Go section, the Capital Fund General Obligation Bond section, Norman Forward Sales Tax Fund, Park Land Development Fund, University North Park Tax Increment Finance District Fund, Center City Tax Increment Finance District Fund, Arterial Road Recoupment Fund, and the Center City Tax Increment Finance District Fund. The enterprise funds in the Capital Improvement Program are the Water Fund, the Water Reclamation Fund, Sanitation Fund, Sewer Maintenance Fund, and the New Development Excise Tax Fund. So in the current fiscal year, these are the sources of revenue that fund the $245 million of capital projects as of October twenty eighth. You can see twenty-six percent of that comes from bond revenue, nineteen percent comes from the capital sales tax, about sixteen percent comes from Norman Forward Sales Tax, and then about eighteen and a half percent comes from user fees. You can see the other sources there as well. In the current fiscal year, there are 451 capital improvement projects. Again, the $245 million. The purposes of each project, you can see here, it's thirty percent are for parks and recreation, about seventeen percent in transportation, about nineteen percent are for buildings and grounds, fourteen percent from water, and the other allocations are shown there. The Capital Improvements Fund was established in 1976 to account for capital projects funded by the capital sales tax receipts. General obligation bond issues or specific matching funds would be private or reimbursement funds. These projects support services that do not have dedicated special revenues like the enterprise funds do. Those projects relating to enterprise funds that are funded with the fees and charges or special revenue sources are accounted for in their respective enterprise funds. So how is the capital fund funded? Seventy percent of one percent of sales tax was set aside for capital improvements by referendum in September nineteen seventy six. Those projects approved for construction with this funding are accounted for in the Capital Improvements Fund. So these are the guidelines that we use to allocate new capital sales tax revenue, and these are just guidelines, they're not set in stone, but this is what we try to stick to. Thirty-six percent for other projects in debt service, twenty-seven percent for capital outlay, and twenty-five percent for street maintenance, seven percent contingency, and five percent for maintenance of existing facilities.
Councilmember.
Have we ever revisited the percentage that we give to this since 1976?
Many times, yes. Most recently, the maintenance of existing facilities was added about six or seven years ago. Contingency was reduced for that. And there was an additional set aside into bridge projects a year or so ago within the street maintenance category.
Okay.
And that was just last year, too.
The status of the capital fund for Pago. These are the amounts available for Pago projects, new Pago projects in the capital fund, and you can see they're negative, mostly due to reserves for the bond proceeds, the bond projects that we have, so. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Jacob for project status updates.
All right, thank you. So to get started on these project updates, we're going to talk about some of the significant projects that have been closed out this fiscal year. These are all completely finished, and all the bills are paid on these. So we have the Flood Avenue Sidewalks, the Imhoff Road Bridge Emergency Repair Project, Creston Way and Schultz Drainage Project, the Merkel Creek Stabilization Project, Porter Avenue and Acre Street Intersection Project, and the city's emergency communication system update from the PST Fund. And then these are some significant projects that this fiscal year were completed, but they still have some bills that need to be paid to finish those out. We have the Transit and Public Safety Maintenance Facility, the Robinson Street Project west of I-35, and the utility relocation on the Thirty-S sixth Avenue Northwest Bond Project. So these are some projects that are underway this fiscal year. We have the TMDL Compliance and Monitoring Plan. We have the Lake Thunderbird TMDL Data Analysis Plan and Update. We have the Lower Inhoff Channel Stabilization Phase One. Fire Station Nine is getting close to being finished. The Engineering Design Criteria Update and the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Review, the Traffic Management Center, the Vehicle Wash Facility, the Downtown Transit Center, eighty new bus stops, James Garner Phase Two, which is from Acres to Flood, Porter Avenue Streetscape, the Twelfth Avenue Northeast and High Meadows Intersection Project with a bid opening in early 2023, the East Alameda Street Bond Project, and the Constitution Street Multimodal Path Project. These are some projects that are under construction in fiscal year ending twenty-three and twenty-four. There's the Municipal Complex renovation, the sidewalks along Classen Boulevard with a bid in early 2023, the Gray Street Two-Way Conversion Project, James Garner Phase Two, the Porter Avenue Streetscape Project, the Downtown Transit Center, and the Jenkins Avenue Bond Project. So these are just some pictures from the 2021 Street Maintenance Program. There's the revo and continuation of 2016 program. So we have the preventative maintenance, the urban reconstruction, and the urban concrete projects shown here.
Councilmember.
I just want to say, I drive that roast every day, and it was a fantastic job, and it wasn't done very speedily, so I appreciate it.
All right, so this slide is just a breakdown by year of that project and where the status is on each year. So for fiscal year ending twenty-two, everything is complete except for the urban road reconstruction, which is currently under construction. And then in fiscal year ending twenty-three, everything has gotten started. Urban asphalt pavement, urban concrete, and rural road are all under construction. The urban road reconstruction is under design, and the preventative maintenance is complete so far this fiscal year. So now we have the 2012 Transportation and Stormwater Bond Program. We have two projects remaining in this program. The first is the Alameda Street from Twenty-Fourth to Forty-eighth Avenue. The construction is looking to be complete on that in May of 2023, and we still have the Thirty-S sixth Avenue Northwest Tecumseh to Indian Hills Road widening. This project is still pending due to a delay in the federal funding. And then if you...
I have a question about that, Sean. Just out of curiosity, if the turnpike goes through, what would that do to that project?
Great question, Councilmember. So we're currently working with the designers of the turnpike proposal to try to understand the answer to that question. As you know, the alignment of the proposed east-west turnpike is really the center of Indian Hills Road, and this project would end effectively at that intersection. So we know it's going to be a different-looking intersection if the turnpike comes through. Bottom line is, the city will build less road and save money.
Okay.
And the turnpike will build more road and pay more of those costs, particularly near Indian Hills.
Councilmember.
Sean, on that Alameda project, I know it says May of 2023. Does that mean that entire road is going to be closed until then, or can we open at least part of it up so people can get through?
Yeah, so right now, they're currently working what we're calling the urban section, which is through the intersection at Thirty-Sixth. That should be completed before the end of the year. They'll open that section up, and then they'll close the section from Thirty-Sixth to just past Forty-eighth. So they'll open up part of the section that's closed now and then move on down that next mile or road.
So the answer is no, Alameda will not be open until May of 2023? Not all the way, but yeah.
Right, well, your question was, will part of it be open up? So we'll be opening up a new section, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But no, it will be closed.
All right.
Councilmember.
Just to clarify, I got an email saying that it will be done mid-December, the Forty-eighth Street there. So we saying that this date is wrong or the thoroughway will be open mid-December to allow people to go back and forth as you're doing the construction?
No, so we'll be completing the Thirty-S sixth Street intersection
Okay.
Before the end of the year. We really think it'll be earlier than that.
Okay.
Then they'll begin working past Thirty-Sixth, so east of Thirty-Sixth and going all the way three to Forty-eighth, through the intersection Forty-eighth. That will be completed in that.
Okay, good deal. I'm getting a lot of phone calls and emails, as Mr. Larry knows, that everyone's concerned about that intersection and that road being shut off. And so, so it will be done in May 2023, correct?
Correct, no later than. Right. And we are, there will be some phasing in there, so the actual intersection Forty-eighth may not be closed that entire time.
Got it, thank you.
All right, so just, before we leave this...
All right.
Just before we leave this slide, just wanted to point out, for the whole program as a whole, we've received over $41 million in federal funds for this program, which has really helped keep a lot of these projects under budget with the city share. So this is just talking about that East Alameda Project, just showing that the funding from that came not only from the 2012 Bond Program, but also from savings in the 2016 and 2021 Street Maintenance Bond Programs. Construction on that project began in April 2023, and construction's looking to be complete in May of 2023. This slide's talking about the Thirty-S sixth Avenue Northwest Project widening from Tecumseh to Indian Hills Road. It's going to widen two miles from two-lane to four-lane, add new traffic signals at Franklin and Indian Hills. It's going to add stormwater improvements, continuous sidewalks and accessibility, and it's going to improve access to Ruby Grant Park, and has a construction budget of $17.8 million. The waterline relocations were completed in fall of 2022, and as we said earlier, the construction on this is pending due to a delay in the federal funds. So far, we've applied for the raised fed grant in 2021 and 2022, and we've applied for ACOG funding for every year since 2016 on this project.
Just one question, Mr. Mayor, Sean, right away? Where are we at with right away on this one?
Yeah, we are shovel-ready. There, and the council, right away is acquired. All the utilities have been relocated, all the environmental assessment's complete. We've got engineering plans on the shelf here, just about 15 million short to finance the project.
Is it correct that this is the stretch where we're having problems with, like, pedestrians crossing onto Ruby Grant?
We certainly have heard some concerns, Councilmember. Ruby Grant, I think originally we had hoped that the road would be done before Ruby Grant was done, and obviously that didn't turn out that way. So I think Ruby Grant is attracting lots of folks, and that's great for the neighborhoods. We have done some additional signage and traffic safety systems to try to address that, but we're watching it closely. We certainly don't want to see an incident there, and the project is designed to provide more conventional pedestrian crossing when it's built.
So I guess back to this question about the proposed turnpike. Do we anticipate that there will be even more traffic on this roadway if the turnpike is actually implemented?
Great question. Again, we're all still learning at a pretty fast pace, as you know, to try to figure out if the turnpike is built first, and secondly, what it will do to our system. That's exactly why we're starting out on our comprehensive transportation plan update here. I think it's fair to assume that a new turnpike in the same alignment as an existing Indian Hills Road is a different, very different thing, will carry a different volume of traffic, will carry a different movement of traffic. We think that the turnpike will actually span over Thirty-S sixth Avenue, but there'll be a very significant interchange at I-35. And I think when all the traffic engineers figure it all out, yes, I think we will see more traffic on Thirty-S sixth Avenue Northwest.
But as it stands right now, they're, like, they're not, there's not going to be an interchange at Thirty-Sixth, so it will go over.
We're not certain about that. We think that could, we think that could be the case, that we think there could be ramps at Thirty-Sixth.
Thank you.
Councilmember, did you have a question?
I was just going to say, so it is possible that Thirty-Sixth might not connect to it at all and have no highway access
Yeah.
At that area.
But then a lot of people would want to, like, woo, to get to it on Thirty-Five right there.
Yeah.
If it's helpful, I'll sort of imagine Indian Hills Road becomes the southern or the eastbound frontage road to the new interstate or turnpike roadway. That'll be over the top, spanning that area.
So moving on to the 2019 Transportation Bond Program. In this program so far, the Porter Avenue and Acre Street Intersection has been completed, and for the next four projects, we have secured federal funds to help get those complete. We have the Traffic Management Center, the Porter Avenue Streetscape, the Gray Street Two-Way Conversion, and Jenkins Avenue from Imhoff Road to Lindsay. And then still remaining in that program is James Garner Avenue from Acres to Duffy, and the Constitution Street Jenkins to Classen Project. Overall, in this program, we're looking to have, based on the federal funds that we've secured so far, about $7.8 million in excess funds available in this program. So those will hopefully go to help the future projects and get those funded as we go through this.
Just going to note that originally, I think all of these locked-in projects were ones we were planning to fund locally entirely, but all received federal funding that we weren't expecting. And then other projects aren't receiving the federal funding we were hoping for as we're just seeing, but these, I think, were all locally funded projects, at least in the beginning, that's what we anticipated. And then they all scored very high for federal funding under the new formula that they used.
I was just curious about that bus stop that's coming to the Porter Avenue Streetscape part of things. What is that going to look like? I know we have that transfer station, like, on Comanche and Porter, so what is this, what kind of enhanced bus stop is this going to be?
Farther north on Porter, we are anticipating a bus, I can't remember the exact design, but there would be a, you'd see, like, a pad for shelter, and obviously, I think some bike racks right there, so. What you see around town right now, a shelter with a pad, I think we imagined a design that matches, so we're toying with that idea as well, matches the corridor.
It's an art-decked
Yeah.
Kind of detail, a little more enhanced. It's going to be up there, Johnson, basically, in that area. We have some renderings from early on in the project that we could happily share.
Yeah, just to give you visual.
Yeah, I'm only bringing that up because we still have that Porter property. I'm blanking on the number.
Fourteen.
That one.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Yeah. I was thinking about it in the context of all this change, so.
So this is just some more detail on the Porter Avenue Streetscape Program or project that's going to be happening, part of that 2019 program. It's going to add decorative lighting, pedestrian and ADA improvements, decorative sidewalks, a new bus stop, place-making gateways and landscaping along it. It's going to begin in spring of 2023, and they're looking to complete that in spring of 2024 for a total estimated cost of about $5.7 million, with $2.8 million in federal funding secured for that project so far. And this is not a part of the 2019 program, but the Norman Forward Program. This is James Garner Phase Two. This is from Acres to Flood. This is a Norman Forward project that's going to add decorative lighting, a new bridge over Robinson Street, an extension of Legacy Trail, a landscaped median, a limited-access express route to downtown Norman, and it's going to begin construction in spring of 2023, and they're looking to complete construction in spring of 2024 for a total cost of $9.5 million, with $4.8 million in federal funds secured for this project. And toward the top of that project, where it connects to Flood, is where it's going to add the roundabout, and then on the south end is where that 2019 James Garner Bond Program project is going to take.
The bridge is going over Robinson Street. Isn't that already, didn't we already make that overpass longer?
We did, when the Robinson Underpass was completed in 2012, we constructed the substructure or the foundation for that bridge. You can actually see the top of the piles if you walk out there. So, and that was very intentional by council and the city to avoid the closure, massive closure of Robinson again. So we should be able to do most of the construction under traffic and just build the superstructure.
Is just that kind of a thing, a deck and retaining wall-ish?
We have all of our designers here, but there's a, we're building a roadway, two-lane roadway with a bike path and then fencing on the western side.
Oh, wow, okay.
We have some renderings of that, I think, maybe coming up as well.
So this is the rendering he was talking about, showing off how that bridge is going to look and how the aesthetics and art are going to look on that project. Kind of detailing the history of James Garner and Norman. There's going to be some nice lights that illuminate those signs as you're driving down Robinson Street there.
I have all the questions. I've, I said at the beginning of this meeting, I'm not asking any questions tonight, I just want to get through it, but here I am, working my... Did we, I know that we were working on the rights to get his actual signature, did we secure that from the family, from the estate?
I'd have to verify that and go back and look at the project plans. Obviously, this project's been led, but my understanding was that they worked with them on that.
Okay. I just want to be able to say that we have that. Yeah.
So this is the Gray Street Two-Way Conversion Project. This is a part of that 2019 Transportation Program. It's going to convert Gray Street to two-way traffic, add pedestrian and ADA improvements, a signalized intersection at James Garner Avenue. It's going to improve the railroad crossing along that street, and it's going to begin construction in summer of 2023 with an estimated completion of spring 2024 for a total estimated cost of $5.4 million, with $1.7 million in federal funding secured for this project, and they've applied for an extra $500,000 for this project as well.
Councilmember.
I know that nothing is certain in the world of construction, but are we confident in the summer of 2023 deadline?
Fairly confident, Councilmember. Again, this is an ODOT project because there's federal funding, so there can always be some shifts in schedules, but right now, we're tracking on, again, same thing, land acquisition, utility relocation's pretty minor, environmental assessment is complete, so we're kind of in our final stages of setting that bid date with ODOT. You'll notice, again, it's going to be a busy year, by the way, if you haven't noticed, lots of big projects under construction in 2023. Typically, what happens is an ODOT project might bid in February or March, and they give an overly generous, in my view, period for the contractor to begin, sixty to ninety days. So you might have a contract award on February fifteenth, you won't see them starting work until May or June. That's how we set this schedule.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
So this is a breakdown of the ODOT projects along Highway Nine in Norman City Limits. So far, we're through the first three phases, and Phase Four, which is from Seventy-second to Hundred and Eighth, I've been told is completing this week. After that, there's going to be a little bit of a break until about 2025, when Phase Five kicks off, and it's going to leave about six miles left on these projects to be completed going forward. This slide is a breakdown of Norman's Surface Transportation and Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, the funding history of this program. So so far, in fiscal year ending twenty-three, we've secured just under $3 million for FYE twenty-four, for around $8.6 million, and the applications for FYE twenty-five have been submitted the end of October, and if all those come in, we're looking at around $13 million in federal funds, which would be the highest that Norman has received so far in these programs, so. Next, we have the City's Vehicle Replacement Program. If you look at the top of the actuals, and at the bottom, it tells how many units were purchased. In FYE twenty-three, we spent $2.4 million and were able to replace sixteen units. This has gone down. Sometimes it can vary if we buy bigger pieces of equipment or a more expensive piece of equipment, but it's also taken into account that vehicle prices have gone up in the recent years. This slide, we're talking about the recurring sidewalk projects that were funded in FYE twenty-three. We have the Schools and Arterials Project, the Sidewalk Accessibility, citywide sidewalks, downtown area sidewalks, sidewalks and trails, and the Horizontal Sawcut Program, all for $905,000. And these also include in the Schools and Arterials for Rock Creek Road, and in sidewalks and trails, that includes that Oakhurst to Twelfth Avenue. and in sidewalks and trails, that includes that Oakhurst to Twelfth Avenue walking trail as well. These are some more recurring projects that were in the FYE twenty-three CIP. We had capital outlay at just over $4 million. We had street maintenance at $2.3 million. Maintenance of existing facilities at $260,000. Stormwater drainage maintenance at just over $2 million. We had ODOT audit adjustments at $100,000. ADA compliance and repair at $386,000. Bridge maintenance at $750,000. Driveway repairs at $10,000, street striping at $100,000, traffic calming at $50,000, community neighborhood improvements at $100,000, building maintenance at $75,000, and the GIS mapping update at $145,000. And so in total, we have about $11.7 million in recurring projects in FYE twenty-three.
I don't know if I'm jumping the gun, but bridge maintenance, where are we with a proposed bond program?
Thank you for that question. We've recently presented to the Council Planning and Transportation Committee, as you know. So we're, I think, right now, we're trying to get on the calendar, maybe in January, to come back to the full council. I think Rambler probably knows that program then.
Beginning of January.
We're continuing to refine the numbers based on feedback we got from you all at CPNT, but ready to bring that back and start having some discussions about your willingness to proceed and maybe talk about possible election dates and that sort of thing.
Awesome. Thank you.
I would point out that $750,000, one of those areas that changed the funding.
Yeah. It was $500,000 prior?
It went from $250,000 to $500,000. And that, of course, is not.
Just because I don't know, what is traffic calming?
Speedhogs.
Circled, we have a traffic calming program, Councilmember, that is neighborhood-driven, so we will get two or three inquiries.
I guess that's the first time I've heard it referred to.
Been several in Ward Three and so on. But we don't get very many petitions. It is a petition-driven program. We help the neighborhoods figure out what they might do to control speeding. It's basically speeding in neighborhoods, which is an epidemic in this country, not unique to Norman.
Thank you.
Yeah, I get lots of questions about this. I don't know that many actually get to the point of submitting petitions, but I get lots of inquiries about.
I get lots of gripes and lots of, I get both. Some people are like, "They made them too big. It's ruining my car."
Slow down.
Slow down. Sorry.
So these are some upcoming projects in FYE twenty-four. All these have submitted federal grant applications as of the end of October. We have two projects along State Highway Nine for multimodal paths, one from Forty-Eighth to Sixtieth, and one from Sixtieth to Seventy-Second. We have the Alameda Road Diet Project, the Lindsay Street Sidewalks from Twelfth to Twenty-Fourth, Boyd and Berry Sidewalks, the resurfacing of Robinson Street, and that Gray Street Two-Way Conversion Project that we had discussed earlier.
Yes, ma'am.
That section on Berry between Boyd and, I don't, can't remember the exact cross street, but it's north of Boyd, where that's like the only place where we don't have a sidewalk on that side. I know that there are street trees and really significant barriers in the way. Is that ever something that we foresee happening?
That is actually what this project would encompass. It's going north to Grover.
Okay.
So it would encompass that, and it would also go on the south side of Boyd, from Berry all the way to Flood. So that would give us a continuous route all the way to Campus, from Berry all the way to the campus.
Great.
So it was an area that we looked at. The intersection is actually part of the ADA Transition Plan, so it made sense to bring this in and to help look for matching funds from there. And then our next, one of our next highest-ranked large sidewalk project is actually either the north or the south side of Boyd in that stretch. So it was very natural for us to use that here and apply for some federal funds that allows us to be able to do this from one big project instead of a lot of little chunks as a phase program.
There's gonna be a lot of conversations with neighbors in that area, right? Because there's not a lot of right-of-way. And would there be a significant amount of right-of-way acquisition for sidewalks or?
It doesn't appear so on Berry, but on Boyd, on the north side, there is. That's why we're elected for this federal grant program to go on the south side, because we have available right-of-way, and we wouldn't have to spend time doing that right-of-way acquisition, and we can work on that for future.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember.
So on the multimodal path on Forty-Eighth that will end up in Seventy-Second Street, where is that gonna end up at? I've got one person who always asks this question, like, every month. So where is that path gonna end up at eventually when it's done?
Yeah, great question, Councilmember. Again, it's been the, kind of, the priority of council for a decade or more to get a multimodal path from urban Norman to Lake Thunderbird. Seventy-Second is a point in that corridor, if you're not familiar with it, where it sort of drops down into the lake area and a series of bike paths. So that's always been our goal, to at least get to Seventy-Second. But we, the ultimate long-range plan is to go as far out as One Hundred and Eighth, David?
Cleveland.
Or beyond.
Could go all the way to One Hundred Thirty-Second.
Yeah. So the notion is to have a multimodal path for other vehicles to be able to get to East Norman to all the way through Ward Five.
All right, last question to ask. What is the Alameda Road Diets? What is that?
I've been wondering when that question is gonna come. You all approved a program resolution a few weeks ago.
This is mine.
We've done some road diets. This is in your comprehensive transportation plan. And again, these are all grant applications, so they may or may not happen if the grant comes in. But the road diet on Alameda starts at Klassen, goes to Twenty-Fourth, basically takes a four-lane road down to a three-lane road with bike lanes on both sides without having to do any construction.
So where does that on Alameda? Where will it begin?
Klassen to Twenty-Fourth.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Why, why would you do that?
Well, good question. Your comprehensive transportation plan looked at that. We've done, I think we've done two or three or four, and there's several more to do. This is identified in the plan as an area that really doesn't need a four-lane road for traffic, even in the projected future. And using that space for bicycles and more sidewalks, that sort of thing, is a great movement for multimodal transportation.
So did you say it'll have, like, a center turn lane?
Yes.
Then individual lanes and then bike lanes?
Exactly. If you wanna look at a good example, Main Street, West Main and Ward Three, recently had a road diet a couple, three years ago, from Thirty-Sixth Avenue West to Forty-Eighth. Took a four-lane road down to three lanes with bike lanes. Had a lot of concerns, understood it at the time. It's worked out really well and great. Not sure I see a lot of bikers, frankly, but we hope in the future that we're promoting multimodal transportation.
Kind of like that. I mean, that's not a super heavily-traveled road, except at, like, Eight and Five, but.
It really is a cheap, a cheap way to do transportation. If you imagine having to rebuild or make it a five-lane, the costs are enormous.
Yeah, it's been part of the other ones that we've done. And they're typically done on streets that are four and five lanes or more wide. And after several years, it's been determined that those streets don't have enough traffic that really merit that many lanes of traffic. And so to make them easier for pedestrians to cross and maybe flow a little bit better for traffic, the idea of, or trying to include bike lanes like we've done on Main Street and Rock Creek Road just west of Thirty-Sixth Avenue as well. And so that's been the idea. There's some other ones that we've talked about, Boyd Street and Klassen, Porter, other potential road diets we've discussed in the past. But yeah, typically, streets like Alameda that are big and wide maybe don't really merit being that wide anymore, so. Something to look at for sure.
All right, so this slide talks about the upcoming plan updates that were getting started. So in October, we issued the RFP for the Comprehensive Plan, the Housing Market Analysis and Affordability Strategy, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, the Stormwater Master Plan, Water Hydraulic Modeling Update, the Wastewater Master Plan, and the Sanitation Master Plan. And these are all with a $2.1 million budget. Also not listed here, but it's still included in that budget is gonna be the Public Safety Resource Allocation Plan. But the need for this plan, the current one is eighteen years old and expires in 2025. And then with the proposal for the potential turnpikes coming through Norman, these plans are gonna help navigate through the possible changes. And now we're moving on to the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. So the big construction project underway right now is the Emergency Communications and Operations Center. It's a $17.1 million budget, with $9.5 million of that coming from ARPA funds. It's gonna be 19,800 square feet and fully hardened. It's gonna have operational redundancies included. It's gonna have an ECC, an EOC, an Incident Command, and Traffic Management Center, as well as IT spaces. 100% of the design is expected this week, with a groundbreaking scheduled for January of 2023 and an expected completion of spring of 2024.
Yay, Word sounds.
And then also in the PSST phone, we have the Fire Apparatus Replacement. This is, FYE twenty-four is the last year on that replacement, and it includes $1.8 million. And that is gonna have a new aerial platform, as well as staff and support vehicles as well.
So the Public Safety Sales Tax Part Two, or Permanent PSST, had a list of projects to be funded, voter-approved, and priorities that we've been going down the list. Basically, the communications system is finished, which was the most expensive part. And then now we're working on the Communication Center, which I think is the second most expensive piece of it. And I believe we've already purchased that fire ladder, one of them, correct? It was a million, a million-dollar fire truck?
FYE sixteen.
Okay. And so we've still got Fire Station Five, which I think Councilmember Tortorello might ask further about. But still got that one and any, if I'm forgetting, one more project we had on that?
That's the last of the critical capital needs projects.
Okay. So we're underway on all of them, except for the Fire Station Five one.
Fire Station Five. So what's the status and where is that in the lineup to even be considered?
It's all about the funding. Right now, the plan is that when the bonds that are paying for the emergency communications and the radio communication system are paid off, which I believe is about three years from now, those freed-up funds will be the funds that will go towards Reconstruction Fire Station Five.
So once those bonds have been paid back, the priority is Station Five then?
That's the plan.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Tortorello, the other element, and it's good to know in that public safety study, the concept of what a north-south turnpike does through Norman and our ability to circulate and respond to either side, mission-critical for us. So it's better that we know that information before we build it. Heaven forbid we built it and, you know, it would be, you know, on the wrong side.
So we're the Mercy of OTA right now. Basically, for the time being, we have to wait and see how their alignment, which should be.
Yes. We anticipate, yeah, there's a hearing, I believe, set for the end of this month.
It is.
And just a note to all of our budget managers, you all saw budget versus actual, and the actual is all smaller than the budget. Just keep that in mind.
Under budget, not under time.
So moving from PSST to the Norman Forward Fund, we have the Young Family Athletics Center. It has a budget of $41 million, and it's fully funded from various sources. Some of those include the Young Family Foundation's donation of $4 million, and the Norman Regional Health Systems giving $7 million, and the University North Park developer contribution of $3.8 million. It's gonna be 135,000 square feet with eight basketball courts, twelve volleyball courts, an eight-lane competition pool, and a four-lane warm-water recreational pool. It's gonna include the Norman Regional Health Systems In-Motion Sports Performance Clinic, retail and restaurant space, and a completion expected in late fall of 2023. We also have the Senior Wellness Center with a $14 million budget. We had CARES Act funding that helped go to this project for $3.9 million. We have the Norman Regional Land Swap with adding $426,000 to this. And eventually, the Seven Eighteen North Porter Project, the sale of that property going toward this project as well. We have a 30,000-square-foot facility, wet and dry arts and craft space, indoor walking track and workout areas, an indoor fitness classroom, a game room and lounge with an outdoor patio, multi-use area with stage, wellness rooms, and a kitchen with a coffee bar, with an expected completion of late summer of 2023.
And just like to point out, Mr. Jason Olson, the topping out, right, is at the end of the month?
Yeah, November thirtieth. Actually doing a luncheon over there while we eat lunch and top the building out. So November thirtieth at 12 o'clock, listen out invites soon.
Very exciting.
Oh, Councilmember, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at these numbers here, 8.5, 3.9, and 4.26. It's about $13 million. Do we think the sale of Seven Eighteen Porter is gonna bridge the gap in that funding? Is that what we're anticipating?
That's the current plan.
Okay.
Trying to stay within that.
So that's the reason we got estimated up there. We're about $1.2 million short. And luckily, that Seven Eighteen Porter, that's what it's, was appraised at.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, so also in Norman Forward, we have the Reeves Park Improvement Project, has a budget of $10 million. This is Phase One for the overall Reeves Master Plan. It relocated the park maintenance to the north base, adds a road loop in parking lots, a T-ball fourplex where the park maintenance building was, has LED field lights, a new restroom and concession, and covered bleachers, a new detention pond, enhanced park walks, trees and vendor areas, and improvements to the existing softball and baseball fields that are planned to be rebuilt in future phases. And that is expecting to be complete in early spring of 2023. Next, we have the Griffin Park Project. This is a $14 million project. Phases One through Five have already been complete, and Phase Six is currently underway. And this is all part of the overall Griffin Park Master Plan. It's a phased approach that helped get the softball and baseball fields to relocate to Reeves. They converted all the remaining field space to soccer fields with new lights, parking and concession and restrooms. It's gonna have large tournament capacity. And in the future, they're looking to add an indoor facility with some additional parking and playground and lake amenities. And Phase Six is looking to be complete in summer of 2023.
Those traffic lights were the most important part of that slide.
So some of the completed projects in FYE twenty-three Norman Forward, we had Ruby Grant, the youth football practice fields, the restroom and parking lot addition. That was completed in October of 2022. And the Rotary and Vineyard Park renovations as well. And then some of the future projects in Norman Forward, we have the new neighborhood parks, the existing neighborhood parks, the ongoing lease payments for Griffin Park, the Canadian River Park, new trail developments throughout town, and some Saxon Park development as well.
Councilmember, quiet.
I know. You know, across the street is the state complex, and they're vacating that. They, they wanna vacate across the street so we don't have to keep leasing it, we can pay. Have we thought of revisiting that? Like, oh, by the way, while you're selling, snatch it from me as well.
Yeah, the dollar value of what we had in the bank to purchase, when they said, "Nope, we can't sell it." We moved all that money over to Senior Wellness. So right now, that bank account is dry. So we're working on a different strategy to acquire.
Okay.
Have a plan to you here in the next month for sure.
Okay.
All right, so now we have some of the upcoming challenges for the upcoming fiscal year. We have the I-35 corridor study. We have the Access Oklahoma Turnpike Plan with public transportation. We have the purchasing of land for stations and then rezoning. We have the recommendations from the transit study as well. New traffic signals on state highways and city arterials. We have the fleet replacement that we had discussed earlier, Fire Station Ten and its staffing, bridge replacements throughout the city, stormwater infrastructure, the fleet fuelings facility that needs repairs, sidewalk gaps throughout town, escalating construction costs, and the plant updates we had discussed as well.
New traffic signals on state.
New traffic signals on state highways and city arterials. Just brought up the conversation that I continually have over time with residents in Ward II of Inhofe and Highway 9. I know the challenges there because of, you know, state road, our road, what the configuration looks like. But I would like to just say that let's please keep that top of mind because we have so many accidents there and people complain all of the time.
For what it's worth, Council, we're hearing some scuttle that ODOT is looking at that urban section of Highway 9 from I-35 to probably 12th Avenue East or probably Classen US 77. It's been in the long-range plan for a couple decades, but they're beginning to look at possible realignment and widening and that could change intersections and all that. So we may be hearing about some movement in the planning stage at ODOT, which of course would impact the city dramatically. So, Ward, come on.
Chief, I have a question about Fire Station 10. Is that the lower one or the upper one when you move?
That'd be the lower one, Highway 9 and 36th area. So we've got the Destin Landing Development down there. Belaton is extending Highway 9. Currently, it's a problem for Station 9 to get there in a reasonable amount of time. And then Station 3, you know, they stay busy around the campus and backing up the downtown area. So something that needs to be addressed or our ISO rating could be in jeopardy. So our response times are not meeting our goals there.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Oh, Councilmember Gray.
I just would like to refresh the memory. What are the thoughts around the stormwater infrastructure? Are we still talking like a utility or some kind of plan to approach voters about doing something about our stormwater infrastructure or lack thereof?
Yeah, I know one of the things Sean's team's looking at, we've been successful in the bond projects on the capital side. And it, you know, we can find an opportunity to develop what might be digestible-sized bites of our $65 million list of stormwater projects on the books and bring that back for the voters to determine, you know, the most critical stormwater needs first. Done as a general obligation bond question.
What kind of timeline do you think that is?
We're writing whenever you are, Councilmember. Again, I think probably the first step in the process is to revisit what the package was in 2019. That was a stormwater utility and a bond issued in two different propositions, both of them failed. But we could easily resurrect that for you and at least show you what that council was prioritizing. I think there was 33 projects and I think 40 million, 40 million was the bond total. Got a little closer on our vote that time than we did in 2016, but it was still about a 55 or 57, 43 against that proposition. So that might be the step one is to go back and see what council prioritized last time and decide how you want to proceed with another approach.
That would be, Councilmember Gray, if you remember from council retreat, we were looking at kind of a 10-year schedule of elections or trying to, you know, forecast out because there's several things that you'll need to be going to the voters for. That and bridges and your street maintenance bond will be coming up soon, water. I mean, there's a lot of things, so it'd be a prioritization of when you do that and spacing.
And one thing I would remind council, you appropriated $3 million of surplus general fund ballots toward the Lower Inhofe Creek Stormwater Project. That's a, that's a big chunk. I mean, it's $3 million is a lot of money. It's dropping the bucket to the $60 million that's needed. But the council's high priority for that is evident.
Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, I think potentially getting the update of the stormwater master plan could help before we put it to a vote for another plan or another rate or utility. Having an updated plan to present, I think, would be helpful.
Isn't that going to take us two years to do though?
Not sure how long it would take to update it.
We have rolled that concept into the comprehensive land use plan there. And so I think my understanding from the planning director is we're going to have that, those proposals back in December and be bringing you a contract in January to start work on that. That package of master plan and stormwater would be one of those.
Thank you, sir.
With that, we would know what we've done so far, what we can take off the list, what has become a problem since that plan was first, was adopted over a decade ago.
Yeah.
So that could be helpful to push that forward further, I think. And then with Fire Station 10, part of the Destin's Landing Development was to include land for a fire station, a future fire station. So we should be able to save some money on land at least with that one.
$10,000 an acre.
Yeah.
My point was going to be the same about the update of the stormwater master plan and just, you know, really having some solid new data about what's happening with that infrastructure before we go forward.
All right. So some of the next steps in the CIP process, on February 14th, we're going to discuss the new proposed projects and have the midpoint evaluations. And then on May 2nd, we're going to review the final proposed capital budget for FYE 24 and the capital improvement plan for FYE 25 to 28. And so if you have any further questions or comments or project requests, we're happy to take them.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. And staff.
Five-minute break while we change staff. Presenting number two.
Five-minute break, and we're back at 30.
And you're on, and that one just perfectly, yeah.
I'm sure you'll be so sad that I won't be here to ask a question, right? I'll be watching YouTube on my drive.
Got it.
I'll be texting questions.
With, like, while you're driving?
No.
Okay. Somebody else, somebody else is driving. There you go. Okay. Okay.
I'll be leaving and have her text you guys the questions.
Deal.
So watch your phone.
Will do.
Hey. I know. I was like, I'm sure that these guys are so sad, I have to leave now, don't ask questions.
I'm sure they will feel your spirit.
Yes.
Bathroom.
Kelly's in the bathroom. We got air blew, body else.
Not anybody there.
Yeah. You're on.
Look at you all relaxed.
For now.
We don't talk about the next budget cycle. I always go really slow, maybe here.
It's like a cardio workout.
That's like leading a.
Oh, I don't like these. They have to be long.
I know. I know.
All right. Again, item number two.
What this whole step, this process is.
Discussion regarding a resolution appropriating $1,139,088 from the Seizures and Restitution Fund balance for the purchase of certain public safety equipment to be used during special events, critical incidents, search and rescue events, and safety equipment for the SWAT team and hazardous devices unit. Boom.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And I hope you folks are all stoked to be here as I am this evening. You know, this has been a long time coming. I want to first thank those council members that pushed to get this thing on the agenda last week to start this conversation. And I want to thank those council members that pushed to have this discussion for this evening through the study session. I think this is a very important session to get information out to our community and to each and every one of you council members. So I wanted to start by saying I really greatly appreciate you guys for this opportunity. All right, moving forward, we've got a PowerPoint here. I'm trying not to kill you by PowerPoint, but there's some things as I go along I will point out in the PowerPoint to kind of educate you on what we currently have and what we're needing, what we don't have, and so what's new and what's not. And also, I would ask that if we could hold off asking any questions to the end of the presentation, because there may be answers to your questions, you know, at the next slide or slide after that, you know, so.
Let's do it. Yeah.
Respect you, Councilmember.
We're not talking to Councilmember, Councilmember Foreman.
I know what she meant by that.
All right, so here's the overview briefly, you know, I'll read that to you. So this is how we start. Skip the slide. No, okay. All right. NPD has had many unmet equipment needs over the years, which will allow us to complete our mission to maintain and enhance the quality of life in the city of Norman by protecting life, liberty, property, and keeping the peace. Keep our, and keep our community and our officers safe. By law, NPD can obtain these only through allocation of funding from our city council. While this council may not be aware of these needs, these requests are not few. Many of these items were first brought several years ago under Chief Humphrey and remain unfilled. Proposals for funding will be brought forward next week and will be structured based on input from this evening's meeting. Many of the requested items have been in NPD inventory for years. Technology and tools have become outdated, non-serviceable, and in some cases, no longer function in an operational way. Officers are now using personal funds to provide equipment that the city has failed to provide, for example, night vision goggles, tech tools for breaching, et cetera. If continued, this would place officers in our community at risk. These requested tools and equipment are compliant with industry standards across the nation and are not new to NPD. These tools in many ways help provide officers the ability to slow incidents down, that's the key, slowing things down, creating time for less lethal options, thus creating a safer environment for all involved persons. Tools themselves do not cause harm. Poor leadership, poor training, poor accountability, lack of appropriate policy of the use of the equipment create potential concerns. We safely complete 70,000 to 100,000 calls for service each year. Dynamic and violent encounters are becoming more prevalent across the country. We just had an officer-involved shooting in Oklahoma City just early this afternoon. Our, where an officer was shot. Our community is not exempt from these acts of violence. We must be prepared to provide the levels of protection that our community deserves. In the last two years, we have had four incidents resulting in more than a dozen officers being shot at. Now, a little history on our SWAT team, founded in 1974, deployed to the community's most violent situations, including hostages, barricaded persons, high-risk situations, incidents where the capabilities exceed those of traditional patrol response. SWAT averages five to six activations each year. The priority is for peaceful resolution. In its 48-year history, SWAT has never used lethal force. Additionally, we support large venue events such as the Norman Music Fest, OU events, you see us around, all these, you know, everything else. Team training policies and equipment standards are set by National Tactical Officers Association, the NTOA, and Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA. Failure to achieve standards reduces our ability to protect our community when needed and increases risk to team members. The requested equipment brings us closer to meeting the national standards necessary for protecting our community. All right, you say it's a replacement and upgrade of current equipment, so we already have this equipment, SWAT negotiations equipment. Negotiators are the key to peaceful resolutions. You know, when we get called out, the first thing we do when the SWAT commander goes out, he assesses the situation, he then reaches out to find out what exactly is going on, then he reaches out to those negotiators. Those negotiators are worth their worth in gold, but they come out and they talk to people in crisis, they talk to the individual on the other end and try to convince them to give themselves up peacefully. They have an extremely high success rate. The key component to the peaceful resolutions and preservation of life in this community when we call those individuals out. The negotiators creates the ability to provide a reliable means of communication with barricaded persons or hostage takers. Current systems that we have are outdated and not serviceable. The phones we use to get into these individuals, I mean, you know, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, and they're past the serviceable, out of warranty and past the date of being Simulation training kits, it's an upgrade of our current equipment. Semunition kits for issue weapon systems converts weapons to only shoot semunitions at soap rounds. So before you ask what the heck's a soap round, it's not anything you put in your mouth when you say naughty words. What it is, you know, if you think about paintballs, where you shoot a paintball, you know, and it's that same type of technology, but it's soap instead, so you just wash it out of your, out of your uniform. Doesn't stain or anything like that. So, and allows for training of using issues So it allows for training of using issue systems in high-stress environments. Currently, they are unable to train with their issue weapon systems. So you utilize those with your, with your issued weapon and not a training weapon, you know, which has a totally different balance, weight field, and everything. So these will help through the convergence on that. Ballistic shield and blankets, replacement of expired current equipment. So we already have this. Current items are several years past expiration and unreliable. The shield and blanket provide ballistic protection, will assist in safeguarding life and property during the high-risk situations, will assist in compliance with OSHA and P O standards for employee protective equipment. Respirators and canisters, replacement of expired current equipment. Provides protection from hazardous environments. SWAT team may in specific incidents introduce chemical agents to assist in creating peaceful resolutions to high-risk incidents. That's what happened, for instance, three weeks ago. Current equipment is expired and unreliable. Standard NPD issued respirators cannot be used in long-term tactical environments necessary to achieve OSHA, P O compliance. Door breaching equipment, replacement and upgrade of current equipment. Equipment necessary for breaching doors when making emergency entry into, into a location. Entering buildings in non-tactical slower ways increases risk and reduces rescue abilities. Increase of, increase of operational readiness and give additional officers the ability to quickly enter a structure to address public safety issues and protect citizens. Folks, we're nearly halfway done, so bear with me. Large venue security equipment, replacement and upgrade. Binoculars with high-definition lens, clarity for accurate visual assessments. Tripods for stable working platform. Current items limit ability to properly identify and assess incidents. These allows for protection of large venue environments and outdoor events. Night vision equipment, replacement and upgrade of current equipment. So again, we already have this. Provides ability to accurately assess and respond to situations in low-light environments. Currently not enough in inventory to outfit entire team. Some are buying their own to supplement. Inability to accurately see in low-light environment significantly limits abilities to safely manage incidents. Aiming laser systems, replacement and upgrade of current equipment. Allows for full field of view vision rather than limited standard optics. Significant increase in low-light capabilities. Currently not enough in inventory to outfit entire team. Some are personally owned items. Armored rescue vehicle and training, not currently owned by NPD. Used during high-risk incidents involving armed subjects. Critical tool to rescue residents from danger. Critical tool to keep officers safe and de-escalate situations for peaceful resolution. It's also primarily used as a defensive tool, not an offensive tool. Armored rescue vehicle and training. Using outside resources limits accountability and increases response time. Maybe require, oh, and to say something, add this, I've got to add to begin of the presentation. There were questions that the council had of the police department to answer questions. I think about twenty or so of them. We integrated those answers in the PowerPoint. So if you have any, if there's something you don't see that you asked, let me know. May be required to work in pairs, used in Norman twice in the last two years, providing lifesaving capabilities, can be used during weather-related incidents for rescue and access. This defensive tool has been proven to save lives around the nation and in our city. Currently available in Cleveland County. They have, Cleveland County has one. It's Alanco. Moore has the MRAP. Oklahoma County has one. OCPD has one and one, one being built. Edmund has one, O H P has two, Oklahoma County Sheriff Office has one. And O H P only has two in the state. The hazardous device unit, H D U, founded in nineteen seventy-two, deployed to high-risk violent incidents within the community. A primary response unit for chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive threats. Deployed to all large events, whether you see them there or not, they are there. Average fifteen to twenty activations each year for devices. Additionally, we support large venue events, Norman Music Festival, OU, same as SWAT. Team training policies, equipment standards set by the Federal Bureau of Investigations with routine inspection. Both the FBI and FEMA require the Public Safety Bomb Squad, T S B S, have a robot, bomb suits for technicians, X-ray machines, and tools to enable them to safely investigate and disrupt any possible explosive threat. Failure to meet standards will result in team dismantlement, failing to have an H D U within our agency significantly reduces capabilities and increases response times when needed. The included request allows us to continue meeting these standards. Protective vests and helmets. Their replacement and upgrade of current equipment. Necessary for protection of officers managing explosive devices. Current equipment is expired and outdated. Failure to replace items will reduce response capabilities. Bomb suits, replace and upgrade, replacing two outdated suits, which are starting to show signs of degradation and pose a risk of failure. Designed to protect certified bomb techs working on and rendering safe improvised explosive devices. Oral X-ray machine, replacement and upgrade. Replacing approximately fifteen-year-old device. Critical tool for evaluating and rendering suspicious packages and devices safe. Necessary for identification of improvised explosive devices, IEDs. Assist in determining safest response to devices. Radiation detector, replacement and upgrade. Replacement of current non-operational device. Used for rapid determination and evaluation of possible radiological or biological threat. Failure to identify and manage these threats in a timely way results in large-scale injuries and potential fatalities. Bomb technician tools, replacement and upgrade. These tools are critical in rendering expected IEDs safe. Allows for more mobile and faster response than a robot may provide. Primarily an immediate response when use of a robot may not be ideal, such as in an active shooter situation. H D U robot. Replacement and upgrade of current equipment. Current robot purchased in two thousand and four. Normal life expectancy of unit is ten to fifteen years. Current robot often fails to operate or respond when needed. Necessary for accessing and evaluating suspicious devices. Also used to make contact with barricaded suspects to assist with communication. All-terrain robot, small, not currently owned by NPD. This is a new purchase. Critical tool for evaluating and managing IEDs in smaller confined spaces. Faster and more agile than larger full-capacity robot. More limited capabilities and duration than large unit. Ideal for deployment in active shooter and SWAT situations. Can be deployed to assist with situational awareness in crisis situations. Unmanned aerial systems unit. Founded in two thousand and nineteen, NPD U A S U serves our community as an effective tool for protecting lives and property within the city of Norman. U A S U is staffed by fully trained and licensed U A S pilots. Program assists with search and rescue, traffic collision investigation, crime scene documentation, critical incident monitoring, H D U and SWAT, disaster response, and critical infrastructure inspections. All team members have completed FAA licensing and meet national guidelines.
You have to wait.
What?
I just had a clarifying question.
Sure.
You said those were allowed.
Later, create our own rules as we go along.
Do we, sorry. Do we have any equipment that fits in this program currently?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We do have some drones, yes, sir. Drones and support equipment, upgrade of current equipment. These are additional, additional devices that will improve response capabilities. Includes safety lighting, monitoring, charging equipment. Industry-leading tool for search and rescue, natural disasters, and critical incident response. Bike team. The NPD bike team provides operational support and community outreach. An industry-leading tool for safe management of large-scale events provides mobility and visibility for officers in areas where vehicle or foot operations are not efficient or reasonable. Deployed to natural disaster, search and rescue incidents, and an excellent community outreach tool. NPD bike team is operated within the standards of the International Police Mountain Bike Association, IPMBA. NPD officers assist in development and instruction of officers throughout the state and nation. Thanks to Officer Thomas Romano. He's, I love that you know this fine young man. The electric assist bikes is an upgrade to our current equipment. Excellent tool for reduction of overexertion and injuries. Allows for prolonged deployment, greatly expands effective range of deployed officers. Has previously been deployed by NPD on demo basis for national training guidance. And we're down to the last three, I think, or four slides here. Seizure funds. Everyone's favorite. All right, asset forfeiture processes are highly regulated by state law. Norman seizure funds come primarily from interstate organized crime. Nearly all are, all are not Norman residents, most not even from Oklahoma. Must have probable cause, burden is always on the state, must prove nexus between criminal activity and the currency. All item funds must be indicated by the court before use. Twenty twenty, one thousand five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight in currency. Two point four percent from Norman residents of that total. In twenty-one, it's one twenty-six thousand, eight ninety-six in currency, three point five from Norman residents. And in twenty twenty-two, one million, seven sixty-seven, five twenty-eight seizure in currency, six point two percent from Norman residents. And that's, the increase is based primarily on the number of stash houses used by international organizations using those, those places here and in the, in the, in the surrounding area. And available funds, federal two oh two, six nine nine, state one two six eight, eight seventy-six. What ifs? If this funding is approved, it will significantly improve our department's abilities to protect lives during our community's most dangerous times. Requested tools will enhance our current failing efforts to meet minimum industry standards. Therefore, we may lose some of our teams. Without the equipment, we will experience continued degradation of our ability to respond to those in crisis when they need us most. As we fail to meet standards, we will lose critical response capabilities our community relies upon. Simply put, inaction will reduce the safety of our residents, our officers, and our community as we will, on an increased rate, be reliant on other agencies to protect our community. Now, questions?
I've been working out all week.
Sweat going for you.
I moved my drink, so I didn't knock it. I'm serious. Okay.
Oh, and if I can't ask you a question, my, one of mine, Steve's staff in the back. I've got guys from SWAT, H D U, bike, drone, back there to answer.
Okay, well, first of all, I think we should get rid of bikes and have mounted patrol. So we can introduce that later. That's way cooler.
You have to feed them more sooner.
I mean, it's, it's cool. That's fine. That's fine.
And shoe them.
Okay. I just hear a lot of no's right now, and I don't like that. Okay, my, my next point, question is, we were on Zoom, so fall or spring twenty, twenty-one, when we had like a twenty-six thousand dollar grant for the shields and then the vests, helmets, and all that stuff. And we were somewhere no on that, so we didn't get the grant. Is that grant still available? Is there something like that where we can maybe knock those off?
Oh, we got the shield. Chief Foster, if you may want to.
It was a.
It's no longer available.
Right, but there's not like another issue?
It will come up again.
Again, but not.
More that will come along.
At the present time?
Yeah.
That's it for now.
Okay. So I appreciate you going through kind of all of the items. And you were talking initially about SWAT negotiations. There are some other items that I was wondering if they were specific, specifically for the SWAT team. And what items are they? Like upgrade to their current?
Okay, we'll go back to the slide because it has all, we kind of broke it down to all the different areas. SWAT had all the things.
So it was all the things?
Yeah, if it was SWAT, that's all SWAT.
Okay.
The H D U, that was all H D U, and then we wrote it on different categories.
Okay, that's helpful. I just was a little confused by, and you were going so fast. I appreciate you, but.
Really hear me, I got a roll going, you know, I slowed it down intentionally.
Okay, because that was one of my big questions was how much of this equipment is for our SWAT team specifically? And then I just had a question about the bikes. What percentage of our bike team is using those e-bikes or electric bikes right now?
None right now. We demo. We have regular bikes right now.
Right.
But the issue is that when we do these large events and guys respond across campus or across the city or across the event site, by the time they get what they need to go, a lot of times they're fatigued.
Okay.
These e-bikes, because they're faster and preserve a lot of energy.
So we'd be replacing their current bikes with?
We'd be adding two.
Okay, adding.
Adding two.
Okay, absolutely for e-bikes. I love that.
And Councilmember, it's kind of interesting, we were talking about the price. The e-bikes are not crazy expensive compared to the price of regular bikes that the police department uses. They were pretty comparable, which I thought was.
And those bikes are about, the regular bikes are about fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred a pound. You know, they're very light and very, very durable.
And aren't they, what's the age of those bikes?
Oh, they vary. It varies.
It does.
Yeah, we replace those periodically.
But you can fix them down.
You can, you can run a bike for, for a little while, for a while. And I think Captain Barbara, I think you had some, you're a bike team, former commander. So talk about the durability of those bikes.
I am one of our mechanics too. We have three mechanics who are in the agency. So we do a lot of our work in-house, we can't use like the bike shops to get it beyond our needs. They range probably our current inventory probably ten years and on. It just varies on the age of the bike. But like the chief said, they're super expensive to begin with. Like these aren't helping from Walmart.
Yeah.
We beat them up, carry a lot here on them. The lighting and the sirens are things to keep them safe and the equipment, it's super expensive. This would be a great opportunity. We ran with a demo, a couple of them, two years ago, I think it was, because of the connections we have with our instructors, national organizations, and found absolutely remarkable results, especially when responding to emergency calls. One of the risks we run and one of the things we really have to teach our guys to do is to make sure that we don't go over too late to the call to get to an emergency. If you're driving, it's easy without the air freshener, you can do things, and you get through that link to the call.
Councilmember Grant?
Oh, did I?
So, no, I mean, my final, I think, questions are more about like process and procedure moving forward. So I think maybe others have questions related to the equipment that I would get back in the queue to ask about. Yeah.
Sure.
About those items.
Councilmember Grant?
Okay, so are there nine of these armored vehicles in the state? Or is this just the metro in that slide that you showed us?
It would be, the requested counties that the questions were asked about, which was Oklahoma County, I think in Cleveland County. So that's, those are, and across, and then O H P. Those were the only ones we, we added. There's others, I'm sure, across there. I didn't, we didn't bring in Tulsa, for instance. I'm sure they have them and some other of those larger cities. We didn't bring in Lawton, they're a different county. So we were specifically asked about certain counties.
So kind of nine in the region. How many times have you all borrowed one? And when was the first incident?
Gosh, we borrowed them period, I think at least four, four times, I'm thinking, in the past. And, and that's just for those critical like SWAT call-outs. And we use them also for like high-worn service that we didn't add up here on the slide that we've used them. But each time we've called them out and used them, we use them in a defensive manner. You know, not, not an offensive, you know, shooting from them or anything like that. It's to cover and evacuate folks and do, and to transport those operatives into that particular scene to take care, to do what they have to do.
Do you remember what that first incident was and what year?
Uh, I think it maybe two thousand and fifteen or six, fourteen to fifteen, maybe? I'm thinking.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, was it? I'm sorry, Captain Hopkes here is our SWAT commander, so he would.
Um, so four times since about two thousand and fourteen? And I was just curious because you had another slide, but it didn't have percentages. What percentage of acts of violence? Like what's been the trend for Norman compared to the nation?
I don't have anything compared to the nation, but I can say that our percentages have been increasing over the years. And I can send you this information as well. But, for instance, we talk about crime. In two thousand and seventeen, we had, and, and in this crime that I'm giving you, we're talking murder, rape, robbery, assault, felonious, and assault simple. Two thousand and seventeen, we had five sixty-five. In eighteen, we had six forty-three. In nineteen, sixty-eight. And twenty, which was kind of an off year with the COVID, we had sixty fifty-one. So it dropped a little bit. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, we had seven hundred and three. So it's steadily been increasing the violent crime. Now, these incidents of officer-involved shootings and things of that nature have become a little more violent and more. and more frequent over the years as well. Uh, and not just in the surround, I mean, the, this, in the nation, but also in, in the state. It's kind of increased. And they're becoming a little bit more, um, devastating for those communities that go through those types of traumatic events.
So you are saying you're having more than five to six activations a year at this point?
Well, we don't only just activate for those types of things. Let me give you an example. When I, several, five, four or five years ago, when we, um, when we were, uh, I was, uh, the administrative commander of the SWAT team. We had an incident that involved a suicidal person. We respond to a lot of suicidal people. And typically, it's not a SWAT team activation unless there's either some particular risk to the surrounding community. Because it's unfortunate, it's not against the law to harm yourself. So that doesn't really rate up as a SWAT team activation. But however, we will send our negotiators out to try to talk to that person and get them some help. We will try to find as, as minimal invasive ways as possible to get them out and to talk to them, get them, get them some help. Well, this particular evening, we got a call, we had a young lady that was suicidal. Her girlfriend called in and said we had a huge argument. She left angry. She says she's going to kill herself. She had pills and she grabbed a rifle. She jumped in her truck and she takes off. Well, we started looking for, you know, we looked all over, I mean, it, for two or three hours. And we knew she kind of liked going out to the lake out east. And so we had an officer out east that was out driving around. He saw a vehicle matching her description and realized that was a truck. So we called, uh, we called for backup. They kind of sort of did a perimeter. And then they called, I think it was Captain Hopkes, to kind of respond and assess to see if we needed SWAT team. Because again, because of the weapon and everything, we can't, we couldn't get close. We knew she was in crisis. So SWAT team was activated. We go out, right? And we get there and she was parked on the road. There was a gate to the park to the east of her. To the south, there was a road approaching. To the north, a road approaching. To the west, you can, you can approach. But from that vantage point, she could see all the way around her truck and there's really no way to get to her safely, you know, with a rifle. So we said, we brainstormed, man, for two or three hours. And said, this is what we need. We're going to need this equipment or that equipment. Well, we didn't have any of the equipment we needed. We talked about getting in the armored vehicle, the MRAP, Moore had one at that time. It would take too long to get there. So we settled on getting our robot, a bomb robot. And so we called the bomb operator, the HDU commander. He went from, left his house from out east, went in town to get the robot and he brought it out. And we, by the time he'd done that, it's been four or five hours to pass. It was a hundred degrees out there. By the time we got there and was able to peek into the, the vehicle and see that there was no movement, but we can approach. It had been, at that time, several hours had gone by. And this individual, this port, this lady unfortunately expired, you know? But had we had, you know, the equipment like our own, you know, uh, uh, Nenco, uh, rescue vehicle, or we had had our drones active then, we could have then approached and looked and seen inside the vehicle safely to bring her out of that vehicle. And that, that call to this day still haunts me, how, how those got on that. SWAT team has those officers around that scene because by the time we pulled her out, she had been expired for a while. Then we realized that hundred degree temperature out there in this truck with the windows up, it was running. We thought she had the AC going. It was not. And so it, it was a terrible, terrible scene. So to answer your question, there's times when we need that equipment, you know, and we did have access to a, a armored vehicle at that time. But by the time we had gotten out there and gotten that vehicle, it would have been way, way too late. So we went to, up for the robot instead. And just, we were fortunate enough that on that deployment, the robot worked.
So she was one of the four times that you called?
No, this is outside the four. What I'm trying to say is that we deployed more than just on those things. We use, we, we pull them on rescue missions to save people in crisis that are suicidal. If it's, if there's a weapon involved, if there's some risk to the officer negotiator, we will call out that particular piece of equipment. Again, it is used as a defensive piece of equipment. And it's, we consider how we use it is less, less than lethal. And you can't have too many less lethal tools. You just can't.
Deputy Chief, and you mentioned that if we don't get the gear that the HDU needs, that, that the HDU will fold, where's the nearest unit to us and what's the response time?
Well, we're looking at Oklahoma City.
Oh.
And what the response time would be, I am not sure now. I have my HDU commander for clarification. That is, uh, Captain, uh, I mean, Captain Lancaster.
So Oklahoma City is our closest, uh, HDU team. And they, we would have to call and request mutual aid from them. And, uh, I would think probably in that forty-five minute range to an hour range would be the fastest they could get here. Because they're, what you find in the, in the HDU or the Bon Squa community is Oklahoma City stays very active. They're one of the most active teams in the state, so they're, they're usually really busy with their own stuff, so.
Thank you, sir.
At least probably an hour, I would say.
Councilmember Lee, or?
Pika.
Yeah, in regards to the, the rescue vehicle, can you give me a little more insight, um, what the actual model is we're looking at? Like passenger capacity, does it have any kind of?
Yeah, I think it's a medium duty four, four feet, five feet, four feet or five feet, medium duty chassis.
Okay.
All right, and the capacity, I believe, is twelve. And if I'm wrong, Chief, uh, Captain Hopkes is correct, and I think it's twelve, that we can transport safely with the equipment.
Does it have any kind of like offensive mounted gun turrets or things like that on it? Or is this strictly for a rescue vehicle?
It's, it's strictly for the rescue purposes of it. Now, you could, if you could have some agency, I guess, that decided they wanted to do something like that. I mean, just quite honestly, you could have something like that.
But that's not the intention.
Here, it's not, it's not, you know, a policy and we wouldn't convert it to anything like that.
And twelve sounds like a good number.
Mount a fifty caliber on top and go around.
When you see, picture this thing.
Yeah.
Twelve sounds like a good number. Have we looked at any models that have a larger carrying capacity? I mean, again, if this is intended to be a rescue vehicle, I just want to make sure we're getting.
Now, this is, this is the standard. Trust me, we can squeeze more than twelve if we have to in there.
Okay, that's what I meant.
That's just, that's just, you know, what it's rated for. We can squeeze more than twelve if you have to in an emergency situation.
They do have larger models and they go up in price significantly.
Significantly.
And weight.
Maneuverability is probably a good thing. You got to be able to get it into the areas and in the service.
Hey Deputy Chief, um, what right now, if you have to dispatch these from another agency, what is, what would you think the time for you to have?
Well, I will tell you, the last incident we had, um, three weeks ago, almost four weeks ago now, I, it took about an hour and a half. By the time Commander got out there in a set situation and realized we need this piece of equipment and made the call to the agency that had the equipment, it was about an hour and a half or so.
Okay, and what do you think the dispatch time would be if you had your own?
Oh, much, much quicker. Much quicker.
Okay. Um, another question I had was, all right, how is your recruiting and retention going?
For, for officers?
Yes.
It's going as well as can be expected. I mean, you know, we, we still have, um, folks in the process, we lost two, I guess, I understand today. One, two of them took office elsewhere. And so that reduced the number of potential, uh, future police officers that we didn't have like two weeks ago. So it's, it's, it's been a struggle, sir. It's been a struggle to get folks to, to work in this profession.
And would you think that, it's your opinion, if we were able to fund this, that that could help improve some morale? And maybe can, and having this equipment and stuff could help, uh, with some retention and possibly some recruiting?
Sure, anything you, we can acquire that makes our officers safer will improve morale and retention. And without that, you know, God, why would I sit and do that, put my life at risk? Because if, if our community leaders don't care, then why should I care at this point? Why, my family comes first. And that's, I mean, that's just a cold, hard fact of it, you know? And so, um, but I don't think we have that problem here.
Okay, and my, my, my last thing, I just want to say, we have people congregate in Norman like no other place in the state. We have justification for this equipment more than any other state agency whatsoever. This equipment is used to protect people and our officers. That is all it's used for, and I sure hope that we can find some support for this kind of stuff.
Councilmember Tortorell, do you?
No, we've asked a question about the process and you've answered that. And we asked a question about retention and this would, would bring more officers to the city of Norman. But right now, considering the event that happened three weeks ago, could you use a SWAT vehicle to evacuate people from that scene?
No.
And why not?
Well, first of all, we don't have a SWAT vehicle now currently. We have, uh, and again, I'll go to Captain Hopkes to describe the exact vehicle that he have. He can, he can explain in much better detail than I can. It's what we use to transport currently.
Yeah, so, well, the one that's broken down or the other one. So the current one that we're actually using right now is a Nissan Quest being. Basically, soccer mom being is what we're using to car around the equipment. And so we're using that to, to do that. We did have at one point in time, a Chevy, uh, C six-five-hundred.
Right.
Uh, box truck. It basically was like a U-Lot truck. It provided absolutely no ballistic protection whatsoever. Basically was just a person hauler along with, uh, you know, slots for, for our gear. And so any vehicle we have, we don't have any vehicles right now that provide any kind of ballistic protection.
So, so right now, two to three rounds would go through that vehicle like what, in your opinion?
Easily, like warm butter.
And kill everyone inside, correct? All right. Um, what other alternatives do you have in the city of Norman besides calling for a trash truck to come and evacuate these folks here?
Really don't have any. Call the fire department, maybe they can, let us borrow like a ladder truck or something like that. Be able to absorb rounds. But there's no way that I would even, I think, even consider placing another city of Norman employee in danger like that. So that's completely not even an option.
This is for you, Chief. So how long does it take to build one of these vehicles? What's the process? And, and if we were, were to vote on this and vote to allocate the funds and you place the order, what is the timeframe before? By the time we place the order, from the time we reset it?
About sixteen months.
Sixteen months.
Yeah, it's, it's not a, it's not a quick process.
Another question, you. Now, in the process, when we have to talk to other units, other cities to use their rescue vehicle, you say it takes about a two-hour average to get the communications process started, to figure out they have theirs available for us to use or if they're using theirs. So, so what's that process in detail?
So typically what happens is I get the phone call and sit there and notify my supervisor about the situation of what's going on. And then once we decide to go off and activate the team, uh, usually I'm one of the very first ones there and I kind of assess everything. I already have a pretty good idea of what's going on based upon my conversations with the on-duty patrol supervisor. So once I get there, based upon the facts and circumstances, if I determine it's not safe for anyone to approach, you know, the structure, uh, I'm not going to tell them to do so, especially with the fact that we're, our ballistic protection or shields and our blankets are outdated, they're expired. So, uh, I don't want to put anybody in that kind of danger. Obviously, if citizens are in the line, uh, I would, you know, we all understand that's what we signed up for. And we would just push forward and take care of, of what we need to take care of. But, uh, you know, if we have time and the, the, the community is safe, uh, make the phone call and then we're looking about an hour to an hour and a half, uh, on a pretty good day for them to go ahead and notify their personnel to go pick up the vehicle and then drive it down to our location. As opposed to where if we had our own type of rescue vehicle, immediately when I sent out the page for everyone to be activated for the call, the vehicle would start rolling to the scene immediately.
It just, it, when another agency sends the vehicle, they have a guy driving it.
That's right.
And does that person stay with the vehicle the whole time we have it?
Yes.
So it's their guy driving, not our?
Yeah, so we have to call, basically it's a mutual aid request. And when the, when they get down here, they don't relinquish the vehicle to us and say, we'll do with it whatever you want. Our personnel don't have the training to drive a vehicle. And plus, there's no way that they would just, you know, leave that burden on to us. So they come down and they assist us with those calls.
Captain, I've got one more question right now. Um, so we had to, to request a vehicle, say, from Oklahoma City. Are these vehicles meant to travel long distances? From, from that distance from Oklahoma City to Norman, to any situation in Norman, are they meant to drive long distance?
Well, it kind of depends upon the type of vehicle, so.
Typical, that's typical vehicle.
Yeah, so you have your MRAPs, you have your Bearcats, uh, you have your Bears, you have your Rooks. Uh, so there's different types and obviously each one of them do different things. But, uh, for like a Bear or an MRAP, they can, but it's not good for their engines. They're extremely heavy. It's not good for the roads. You have to be mindful of like the bridges you're crossing. And so they're not really an optimal vehicle to, to choose.
So.
That, I was going to say, that's, that's kind of the beauty of the Bearcat is that, uh, any kind of vehicle that size is that the maneuverability, the weight of it, uh, and the capabilities of it really kind of make it the, the perfect vehicle.
So in, in your opinion, um, if they have to travel long distances because you're calling from station to station, is that possible, in your opinion, that these engines can overheat and become unusable by the time they reach our site?
Yes, and in fact, that actually did happen in one of our incidents back in, uh, twenty twenty-one. What was it? Yep. So we had to borrow one from, from the Moore Police Department, had to borrow the MRAP. And once it got down to the scene, uh, it ran for just a little bit and it broke down. And then basically it was just a, a big vehicle, just in the middle of a, a big armored vehicle that wouldn't move.
This was the Bevanger House incident, correct?
Yes.
That was a mile from my house in Ward Five. So we requested two vehicles because the first one was overheated and broke down.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Farmer?
Okay, so one of my questions was, we're talking about response times, how fast does it go?
I think it goes the same speed of a regular vehicle, the Link Cat, Bear Cat. It's just on a, on a medium duty, uh, four chassis. So it's heavy, but it'll, it'll go, uh, you won't get a hundred and fifty mile an hour in the.
Right, okay.
Through highway speed.
Okay. Um, and it, it's not fashioned with any weapons on the outside. We're not talking about a military style tank or anything like that. Let's not knock soccer mom vans. Have you been to Griffin on a Saturday? Y'all need a patrol, those parking lots at the soccer fields. Okay. Um, so for this type of vehicle, where would we house it? We don't have enclosed part, like we don't have a good really place for, like where would we keep it?
We will.
Have.
I think we talked about housing at the, the Nick?
Nick initially.
HDU stuff.
Once the OC gets built and there is covered parking along those lines and we can place some side there.
Keep it there, okay. And then Chief Jackson, we had talked about last week when I saw you. I think you said there were like four reasons why you would like roll it out. What were those reasons?
You know, our policy, I don't know if you guys had a copy of any of that. But base, but basically it, it would be in, critical for hostage, active shooters, rescue, high water rescue. Other, and if I miss one, guys, the time I think those.
High risk warrant service.
High-risk warrant service.
Varicated criminal.
Yeah, varicated, yeah.
That was actually the incident for the officer involved shooting in Oklahoma City this afternoon. It was a high-risk warrant.
Yeah. Okay, that's all for now.
Councilmember Schuler?
I think Councilmember Holman's been waiting.
Okay, sorry.
I'll let you go.
Sure. Uh, I've got kind of a list here. I'll just go down it. But, um, I do appreciate all the information and update, uh, in-depth look at all these items. I think that's very helpful for us to explain it to our constituents and help us better form our, uh, how we might vote on this should it come before council. Um, I do want to note that there's a issue with staffing is nationwide. I know the Moore Police Department has, is down a few officers. We were just in Lexington, Kentucky this weekend, visiting the University of Kentucky. And we got an update in a meeting with their police department that they had over a hundred funded positions that they have unfilled in their police department that they're, they, and they were excited that they had twenty-three cadets in their department. And their city has over three hundred thousand people, so. Uh, fully funded positions, ready to fill them, but they're having a hard time finding them as well. Seems to be an issue everywhere. And I would mention that they have two Bearcats and two helicopters in Lexington. They made sure to tell us about that. Uh, so, but I do understand how having better safety equipment can attract good talent with, for officers over a department that doesn't have stuff. I, I definitely understand that. But I don't think it's a solve-all for that issue, um, as we're seeing with departments all across the country. I do appreciate the, uh, again, the update on the equipment, the, kind of my questions are what specifically was it for? And it does sound like a lot of it is related to the SWAT team, uh, which is, uh, makes a lot of sense to me, the night vision equipment. I don't think officers should be having to use their own money to buy equipment.
Amen, yeah.
Like anything that we're needing them to do during their duty on the job should be covered by the city.
Plus, we can do the quality, making sure that they get good quality gear that does the right job and is, is, is good throughout that confrontation.
Absolutely, and, and I'd be interested in knowing if there's any other equipment, regular patrol, whatnot, if there's officers buying their own stuff. Because I don't think they should have to, and that, that's something that we should, should definitely be responsible for. And then, uh, same thing. And then, same thing with the laser system, makes sense for the SWAT team to have that type of stuff. The ballistic shields and blankets, again, I was wondering what those were specifically for and how we were using them already. So I appreciate the explanation about that. I think last time, kind of the conversation was about potential civil unrest going up to the twenty twenty election and the potential need for our department to have crowd control gear, which, you know, a lot of critics labeled as riot control gear and have there been riots in Norman? Do we really need this? And it ended up being peaceful in Norman, I think, during that election, as it always has been. I don't know of any riots that we've had in Norman during my time growing up here. Not that it could never happen, but I appreciate the clarification about this request and how it may be different than that one we looked at a couple of years ago. And same thing with the semunition, I wasn't sure what that was, but a training tool, anything that helps with training, I think, is good. Large venue equipment, we have a lot of those events in some pretty large venues, so that makes a lot of sense as well. Door breach equipment, replacing, I appreciate you clarifying items that we already have, that we've had for X amount of years that we need to replace. So I think that really helps understand a lot better as well. And when it comes to the different robots, is, do I understand that, are we talking about three different robots or two, how many different robots? An all terrain one, a one that's for hazardous device?
One's a large and one's a small.
Okay.
And the small ones for just getting to tight places and the large one has, of course, much more capability. And again, Captain Lancaster.
It's just two different robots. One, the large one would replace the one that we already have that's past its useful life.
Was that the one that was at National Night Out?
Yes.
A nineteen nineties VHS video quality?
That's the one that's required to keep, keep us as a certified squad. The smaller one really is more surveillance and, surveillance is probably the wrong word, but a communication and like a second set of cameras for us if we're working a larger device. Or like, if you remember the Weather Center incident from a few years ago, with that incident where we deployed the robot, well, that smaller robot actually gives you like a perpendicular view for what you're, you're working in. So it's, and it's helpful in SWAT situations as well where we can run that smaller robot into house, cause less damage than the larger robot will be and be able to communicate back and forth with the barricaded subject.
Okay. And let's see, that one's what, the drone equipment. I've seen that unit in, in action and got a pretty good demonstration of it during the National Night Out event. And definitely appreciated that, and I have seen how helpful it has been, especially in post incident videos where we're able to get a shot of the, where the incident took place. The public can get an idea, a very clear picture of where this incident took place. I've seen a lot, a lot of police departments doing these videos on YouTube and things. I found it very helpful for the public to understand more clearly what issues are going on when it comes to crime or police response in the community. So I've definitely seen the value in the drone unit. The e-bikes for sure, having that assist. A lot of bicyclists I know could testify about the helpfulness of those. Norman is not as flat as many may think it is. There are some areas that are very flat, but there's also some parts where it can be a real challenge when you're on a bicycle, especially if you've been on it for quite a while already. So I definitely appreciate the update about that and the description of what that would be for. I wasn't sure if they were just fully automatic, like electric bikes, or if it was an assist or something like that. And then, on the, let's see, issue of the, I would ask, the negotiation equipment too. I think we've, as noted here, I mean, extremely impressive that in all the years of our SWAT team's existence, they've not ever used lethal force. And I know some of our negotiators and my discussions with them and seeing some of the incidents they've responded to, and I think it's a real, you know, testament to the people we have doing those things where we've been able to successfully deescalate situations. And within, a lot of credit without having this, you know, the Bearcat or some other equipment that other departments may have, we've been very successful at resolving the situations without loss of life compared to a lot of other places perhaps. And I think that's the great training that we've been able to provide and the good people that we've been able to recruit to do it. And so giving, making sure they have the equipment needed to, to do even better at that is helpful. And so appreciate the explanation about that one as well. And then, in regard to the armored vehicle, you answered several of the questions that I had asked about how many would be recommended, how many are accessible in this area. Some of the questions I did have, we could maybe elaborate a little bit further on is, so what maybe, what is the agreement that we have with other departments to use their equipment? I assume if it gets damaged, are we, is there an agreement that we pay for it? In this particular recent incident, now that the county has one, one of my first, my very first thought to Daryl was, how come we're borrowing Moores, the county just have one, has just got one, what are they using it for? And, because I thought maybe they kept it here in Norman.
In pairs, you know, it's best to use them in pairs for distraction purposes and/or for evacuation purposes, covering and moving people out of the danger zone. So pairs ideally tactically is the best way to use them in tandem.
Was theirs available, the county's during that event?
Yeah, we use counties.
Okay, so both of them.
Both, both Moore and county responded.
So I wondered, I was like, why would theirs not be available?
I've got Major Vincent, he's chomping at the bits, I brought him here. Has no purpose, he says, if I don't call him, so.
It's time to share, it might help answer some of the questions you're getting. So county does, Sheriff Amerson has, has a rescue vehicle, Moore has an MRAP. It's the big, heavy.
Military, yeah.
Mine resistant armor personnel. And like, like Captain Hocke said, that when we took that to the Bevanger House, that thing broke right in the middle of the road. That's not a reliable piece, that's just a tough piece of equipment. But right, this is the important part to think about. From a partnership standpoint, right now, we've got a great relationship with Sheriff Amerson and Chief Gibson, but, and that's what gets us access to, so, so Chief Gibson, Sheriff Amerson already have somewhat of an agreement there. From a tactical slash SWAT standpoint, they work together already, so they're a package, they're a package deal. Because we have a great relationship with, with those agencies, they're willing to come out whenever. If we should ever, if, if, if the sheriff goes to do something else or Chief Gibson goes to do something else, that, that piece is gone. So we have no idea what the next.
It's a handshake.
Absolutely. Any of that leadership changes, we could lose overnight, we could lose access to that, to that rescue vehicle. That's our first, our first option. Beyond that is Oklahoma City, Highway Patrol. But here's the really, really crucial piece of that. When we ask Chief Gibson if we can, or the sheriff, we, we, the way we work, we retain that operational leadership of that call. So Captain Hocke was driving that call throughout the duration. If we ask for Oklahoma City or the Highway Patrol, we lose almost all operational control of that call. And I assure you that you would prefer that you have this group of people running that call as opposed to an outside agency. That's an incredibly crucial piece, as you guys are visiting with your community and your constituents. I promise you, you want these guys leading that call and making those decisions. So just something to, to keep in mind. And the other thing too, we, Sheriff Amerson and Chief Gibson, great partners. But remember, and I think Gary brought a good point, when we ask for that help, they do, they send their, their rescue vehicle down with their, with their teams. So I'll take you back to a few weeks ago. In a moment's notice, they deployed, still took about an hour and a half to get down here, but they come with their people. So the first group of people that, that were being shot at basically was the Moore, Moore Police Department. So we, from a partnership standpoint, when I say that, because she was driving the truck. So there's a, a partnership component to that, is how many times can we go back to Chief Gibson and Sheriff Amerson and say, hey, can we borrow your rescue vehicle and your people? And we hope they don't get shot at this time, thank you for last time. So from our standpoint, that's really something that we want to try not to have to do a whole bunch. So just something to think about on those pieces.
Was there gunfire at that incident at the Torvey residence before the vehicle arrived?
There was not. Is that right, Gary?
No, there, there wasn't. Basically, what ended up happening is we negotiated, we were attempting to negotiate for many hours and nothing, nothing was happening whatsoever. And I don't know how far I want to go down this, this incident, I mean, it starts going to court and things like that, but. Yeah, so, but I will say that, trying to think of how to word this carefully. No, nothing, nothing had happened before that, that incident, before the Bearcat showed up.
Okay, I'll just mention that because.
But not, that's not to say that nothing.
Sure, sure.
Like, we were doing certain tactics and things that just weren't working.
Part of the criticism of those vehicles is a perception that they have, otherwise I wouldn't say peaceful incidents, but incidents that maybe didn't have gunfire action until that, basically a perception of those vehicles can provoke gunfire from a subject by, it rolls up, they all of a sudden feel threatened by it, I'm not sure. But that's a criticism I've heard conveyed and just kind of curious.
I've been shot at.
With that, sure, right, right.
This situation, I think is perfect to explain that on. If you wouldn't have had the vehicle, armored vehicle, to roll up there in front to get us closer to that incident, you would have had to send people up there. He would have started shooting even with our people approaching. And when people did approach, even with the vehicle there trying to gain access or communicate, he started shooting. So it stopped the rounds that's coming out through the garage and through the front of the house too, I think.
I purposely did not send officers into, into getting shot, into law and fire. I, I didn't do that because I knew what could potentially happen, so I don't want to go down this rabbit hole because.
Just approaching him at all could have.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I appreciate that explanation.
And may I add to that?
A two to three round will go eight hundred and fifty meters and still be lethal. A thirty caliber round will go seventeen, twenty meters and still be lethal. And so if you're thinking in, in that particular case in a housing development where no matter where he goes, there are things that are within a mile, you're a target. And that's, that's part of the rescue part, but anyway, I'm speaking out of turn.
Just got a few more here, just, yeah, I appreciate that explanation. And the five thousand per officer times four, so we'd have four officers that are certified to drive this? Or basically there'd be somebody available twenty four seven that would be able to drive this vehicle?
Yes, sir. So what we're going to do is send them to an official school to make sure that they understand the capabilities of the vehicle so it doesn't get tipped over or they're mindful of just the turning radius to make sure they're not, you know, running into mailboxes and things like that. That's what that's for there.
Okay. And then, the last part is just, my comments are just about the funding source. I don't have really a problem with, still have some heartburn about the armored vehicle. And based on the response I've received, mixed feelings about it for sure. But the other items, I don't have a problem moving forward for sure, at least in my opinion. I would like to explore other funding options for this list of items though. I understand that civil asset forfeiture is legal in the state of Oklahoma, but the Institute of Justice has rankings on this particular matter. And Oklahoma is a state where a hundred percent of funds are able to go towards law enforcement. So a financial incentive for forfeiture laws, Oklahoma has a hundred percent. And the federal government has a hundred percent also. New Mexico, Missouri, Wisconsin, Indiana, North Carolina, Washington DC, Maryland, and Maine are the only states that have zero. So civil asset forfeiture may exist in those states, but law enforcement is not entitled to any of those funds. So they may use it for some other form, but they've eliminated any appearance that law enforcement is directly benefiting from the confiscation of property. And so outside of those states though, the next lowest state is Vermont at forty five percent. And then the rest of the states are all above fifty percent. And it doesn't really matter, seemingly to be a political matter, Republican and Democrat states across the board have, are similar in the regard or treatment of civil asset forfeiture. The standard of proof, Oklahoma is the second to lowest, there's the preponderance of evidence. Nebraska require, and North Carolina require beyond a reasonable doubt to have your property forfeited. Several other states are just below that, beyond a reasonable doubt slash clear and convincing. But again, Oklahoma and the federal government are both in the second to last category for that. And innocent owner burden, Oklahoma is classified as an owner's burden. So the property, the person who owns the property, it's, the burden is on them to prove that the item has not been used in a criminal act. The federal government also has the burden on the owner. The government burden, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, ten states in the District of Columbia where the burden is on the government to prove it. And then a few states have, depends on the property as their deal. And then the forfeiture laws ranking in the United States, Oklahoma ranks with a D minus. And the federal government also ranks a D minus in the integrity of the program. New Mexico has an A minus, that's the highest of any state. They're also the only state that has an A. There are several that have Bs and B pluses, Missouri has a B plus. But we're a D minus, Texas is a D plus, Louisiana's a D plus, Arkansas is a D minus, Kansas is a D minus, Colorado's a C, California's a C plus. So again, not really a political issue, Republican, Democrat states both don't, do not grade very well on this particular issue. So that is where my problems come with this funding source is, I just don't, I have a lot of problem with the integrity of the funding source when it comes from the state and the federal government. And I don't know what to do with the surplus of those funds that we have. I think that's something we're going to have to figure out. But I would definitely like us to think about and explore potential other funding options for this list of items. I'm not opposed to, you know, sending these all forward to a vote, make a decision, so.
Just a question in the comment, the rankings, who's doing the rankings?
Institute for Justice.
And who, and who are they?
They're a nonprofit that explores criminal justice issues in the United States.
Oh, okay.
And DC, and I was just going to, the thing in the presentation that was a big number to me, that the funds that we've already got that had previously been adjudicated, that's about one point four million in total. That doesn't include dollars from twenty twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty two, which still may be in the process of going through the courts. And it just seems like the dollars that we are taking off the streets from those stash houses are literally from I thirty five. We are just a straight shot from drug markets nationwide back to, you know, the cartel where those, we, we catch drugs going north and we catch money going south. I have a feeling that fund balance is going to grow pretty substantially when we think about what fentanyl is doing and how that market has exploded and what we're seeing in the world of illegal marijuana, seizures of both the product and the cash that go along with it. It'll be interesting to see if that, I anticipate voter approval for recreational this spring, summer. And I, I'm just curious to see whether or not that will increase the volume of illegal activity related to the product and how much more cash that's going to wind up, you know, contributing to the fund. But that, those, that one slide, that was the biggest shock of what I saw in the presentation.
Along with that was, I'd say be cautious when you get these types of rankings. I, I don't know what criteria is used to rank, you know, we ran into this a couple of years ago with CPB, you know, and I was a huge supporter and proponent of that, you know, until I started looking into what they were doing and kind of what their ulterior motive was behind their reports. And, and so it was a huge eye opener for me. So I'll be very cautious about those types of organizations providing these types of statistics. I'm not saying that you're wrong or anything like that, I'm just saying be cautious about it. And, and again, like. And, um, and again, like.
Trust, verify, was that the same?
Yeah, like the CM said, you know, these things have a drug, a crime nexus to it, and I don't, how we look at it, try to coat it, sugarcoat it, whatever, there's a crime nexus to it, and a lot of this, these funds were derived not from mom and pop shops, but from major drug trafficking on the interstate, on the interstate. And so, you know, it is what it is, you know, and so I, 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 I have, um, I have an issue with, with tasking our constituents in our community.
I'm for sure.
To pay for things where we have funds from this type of activity to pay for it, and I, I, I totally respect what you're saying, sir, and you know, we talk and I, I get, I respect you for what your stance is and all of that, but we have to consider these other things as well. And I'm just, just saying, so appreciate you, appreciate your comment, appreciate your support.
Councilmember.
If I could one follow up.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I would just say I appreciate that, um, I appreciate everybody's opinion on this specific issue, there is wide range of opinions about it, um, I don't think there is a massive incentive budget wise for the Norman Police Department to take people's property. It's more of an issue in rural areas and counties and things like that where they have no real sales tax or funding source, um, so, uh, but I do, I would just say that our overall city budget is, how we use it is, um, reflection of our priorities. And if these, in my opinion, if these items are a matter of priority and extreme need, immediate need for our city, then they are worthy of us considering our general budget, uh, to use, use on them. Uh, so that's how I'd feel about anything, if it's a vital need, if we feel so strongly that they're needed, then our budget priority should reflect it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll make my statement after you get done with yours.
Okay, um, so I had a few follow up questions for whomever from PD. Um, and then I've got some questions for, um, City Clerk or Legal. Um, okay, so I guess to this point about seizure funds, um, is there a, an opportunity or, um, for us to be thoughtful about the way in which we're using the different percentages of what is taken from Norman residents and then what is this larger kind of drug trafficking type money, so, I mean, you've listed here, we've got percentages in like two point four percent norm from Norman residents. Could we think about using those specific monies in a different way? Um, to kind of get around some of this, that like, these are our residents, this is our residents' money that has been, you know, confiscated in some capacity, um, and might we think about other ways to spend that money that would be directly invested in kind of community outreach and other things that the PD is doing?
Federal government has very specific guidelines on how that seizure money is spent, and we've got to adhere more to the federal, federal guideline.
Are there opportunities for other uses?
Not by the feds.
So the, um.
Neuroscope.
Right, feds, feds and state buckets depending on whose, whose case and how it went. The ledger that is maintained that gave, uh, the deputy chief the statistics to identify how much of that was local. A, a, a question that just came to mind is, is we know the lion's share of those dollars are, are drug related. That's the, the type of crime where the cash comes from, and perhaps, and I'm, I'm, I'm kind of grabbing that, we know how many of those dollars were local, um, i- is there a campaign on the dangers of what's going on? What, what are those drug challenges doing to our community? If there is a method for us to identify which are the locally garnered dollars into that drug campaign?
Right.
If it, if it could fit into this, you know, maybe the state criteria or the federal criteria, I see exactly where you're going.
So I'm thinking like community policing, I'm thinking about mobile crisis, or I just don't know, like, are there ways to think about it in that capacity?
Uh, we've got about one point four, so if you take the highest percentage off of there, let's say you take a hundred thousand out of it, the six or seven percent or whatever it is, uh, and put it, put what we seized locally.
Yep.
Uh, to education, drug education, you could, we, we could do that. And there's still plenty left to do this purchase that came from outside of our city.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about ways that we keep this in the community and prevention and outreach and
Valuable.
Different things.
And if you have any additional question, I would direct you to the, uh, the Fed's, uh, Asset Forfeiture Policy Manual, came out in twenty twenty-one, put out by the DOJ, and that gives you.
We can get you a little.
Like two hundred and three pages, but.
I understand, yeah. Just, just trying to think outside the box as we're.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Council, council member, um, we, we use the term Norman resident, and it's, it's Captain Hawk and I, Hopkins and I have both recently supervised that unit that's involved in the drug enforcement here in our community, and Norman resident is a loose term, and from the lack of the trend that we're seeing in the last probably five years, it's not Oklahomans, it's criminal organizations coming from outside the state and they're setting up shop in Norman. So Norman resident is not necessarily a good term for some of these seizures that we're talking about.
The state or the country, Aaron?
Both, both, chief, both.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, my, I appreciate that clarification, but I think my general idea of trying to use it in kind of these preventative measures kind of still, still stands. Um, but I do recognize that, you know, in this, that a majority of that money is, you know, kind of transiting through our community and not, um, kind of starting here. Um, okay, so one of my other questions was gonna be, um, what is the, I guess, proposed cost of upkeep and maintenance for an armored vehicle?
We're working on that now, as a matter of fact, and, um, what, what we have to do is go up to Massachusetts, Massachusetts, I think, right? Was, Massachusetts, I think is where it is.
Lincoln?
Uh, Lin, yeah, Lincoln, and we have to go through a, through a facility side and ask those questions. As a matter of fact, we're taking, uh, personnel from, from North Base with us because they're the ones gonna be doing the service and all of that, and they have specific questions, they can talk, mechanic keys and mechanic keys.
And, and the good news is on that F five fifty chassis, we actually have that chassis that's utilized by one of our mechanics, it's full of big tools, so if a garbage truck breaks down, they roll that exact Ford five fifty chassis to go change a tire on a garbage truck in the middle of a neighborhood. So at least our shop is very familiar with the maintenance of that, the engine, the brakes, we have those parts in inventory too.
That, that's a very good question, and as a matter of fact, all the questions are just phenomenal, I just appreciate you guys a hundred and ten percent.
Well, I appreciate y'all being willing to kind of have the, the full conversation about all the items and to provide clarity not only for us, but for the community.
Absolutely.
As we're thinking about, um, the purchase of these things. Um, my other question before I ask, um, about procedure moving forward is where does our future public safety study factor into us thinking about utilizing this type of apparatus in our community?
So wonderful news.
What is the timeline for that?
Um, we know that the policies and procedures that we follow are, are the national standard. The RFP for the public safety study is due to go out on the street.
We've got our side, it's, it's all done, I just left legal.
Got it, so we're on the verge of rolling that study out.
For review and some revisions, but I don't think it's anything huge.
So sometime in December, we think that'll be out on the street, and we want to make sure, like on our, uh, comprehensive plan update, that it's out long enough to make sure all the consultants get the opportunity to Q and A. Um, the reality of, you know, once again, OTA could definitely have an impact on what comes out in that report, uh, and then our participation in the SEC as a university town could definitely have an impact on, on that report, so the timing of council's action, it, it couldn't happen at a better time for us to get actual real valuable data back in that, in that study.
Is, you know, I understand time is of the essence with lots of things and hearing, you know, that it takes sixteen to two year, sixteen months to two years to, to get a vehicle like this, is it appropriate to wait until we have our full public safety study done, or is, is the need that critical?
It would be put into service immediately, you know, probably soon as the paint's dry. Um, what I think, what I think we'll find in the study and what we are hearing from our neighboring agencies, we heard it from the uh, Assistant Chief in Lexington, Kentucky, and Councilmember Peacock, Councilmember Holman were there, uh, when they described, you know, we think the drone is truly a valuable alternative to a helicopter, and helicopters are insanely expensive to maintain. What they indicated in the armored vehicle was, the second armored vehicle is when they were able to really take full tactical advantage of that type of equipment. And what we're hearing from all of the SEC schools is they have multiple, and they use them in tandem, and, and, and there are strategies and tactics that come with the availability of more than one. Um, you know, we're looking at one, where would we park it, how many people do we have to train it, do we have enough people to us operate two, we know we can do one, and if that second one for tactical purposes does come from where the sheriff, um, then, then we think that'll be sufficient, but we, we don't anticipate anything that'll come out in that study to say you, you don't need that piece of equipment, it is becoming industry standard, and we think all of our counterparts in the SEC would say with the extra people that are gonna show up in your community, you're gonna want every bit of that.
Can I interject something, sir?
Please.
So you're asking about timelines and pushing it back, and so many of these items like I've asked for and expanded funds request and try to go through the normal process of getting it picked up on the general budget, and it's, it's been denied for one reason or another. I have guys going out to scenes right now with expired shields.
Yeah, I was not talking about the other, I, I was specifically talking about the one large item that we've had, you know, contentious conversations about in our community. All, frankly, all of the other items I fully support as, you know, Councilmember Holman talked about, so I, it's really just that one large item that I'm really talking about.
Okay.
Just to clarify where I'm going with all of this. Um, so I guess my questions about process and moving forward, I know all of the items are on one resolution currently lumped together, is there a possibility of uncoupling the two items that are related to the armored vehicle, mostly because I would like to hear public input about that item and reserve, you know, judgment on what the community would like to see moving forward for, for those, since they are the larger, that is the larger contentious piece of this, um, so can we?
I can speak to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I can speak to that, what we want to do, in my opinion, is, is if, if we want to break them apart, break the three hundred and fifty-three thousand out of the, whatever the remainder is, that's one, one kind of thing. Question first off is, do we want to buy the equipment, it seems to be that we do. When we're talking about the equipment that is not the, the vehicle. So if we want to put the other part as another, uh, item and, and sit down there and, and talk that through, whether you're a public comment, fine, and all the rest of that. And then the next question is, how do we want to pay for this? Some people have reservations about, as a seizure, I personally do not, it's using drug money to buy good stuff. So it, to me, it's, it's, it's an easy decision, but that's up to us.
Yeah, and one of my other questions related to just the resolution itself is, is is there a possibility of, um, specifying which model of the armored vehicle that we would be looking to purchase? So just, I think this would allay some of the community's fears about, you know, talking about we're not gonna have, you know, gun turrets, and we're not gonna have all of this like assault style stuff on the vehicle. Um, and being able to put that in explicit terms within the resolution would help that.
I, I believe so, and the model is on the state contract, DC, I think that's, that, the, the, yeah, and it's, it's not sole source, there are different vendors that make different kind of types like that, this one, at least the, the teams are familiar with how, you know, how it functions and what it's like on the inside and everything. Um, I think we could get you very detailed information on, th- this is the way it comes from the factory.
Yeah, I don't want to limit from obviously the RFP process and all of that, but like, being a little bit more specific about what types of, I guess, features will be located on said vehicle.
I just want to add to that, that that is a lot of the feedback that I have gotten too, is just clarity on exactly what we are buying. It's not really the dollar amount, it's, you know, we're all the bell, bells and whistles.
My guess is we could even have pictures inside and outside of what, what vehi- what it is on the state contract that we would be proposing.
And don't hang out of it, Chief Foster.
It's funny you mentioned that, uh, that's what we heard from our counterparts in Lexington.
There's a lot of people concerned.
Don't ride it in a parade, don't, don't, basically, don't flaunt it.
I don't see you with like pom poms.
We're not politicians, some even wouldn't do that, there's no point, no point us doing that.
And it's hard on the road, you'd rather not, you just put it on the road and everything.
That's a, so we're in town on equipment as well.
Yeah, exactly.
We can certainly split.
Yeah, I would be in favor of taking them in separate chunks.
You just need to give us some indication tonight, if you want everything else in one resolution, and you just want the vehicle by itself?
Personally, I am fine with that, I think it would be the vehicle and then the training associated with that would go together, because I don't understand why that they would be separate.
And then what do you want to do about the funding source?
Um, I will leave that up to others to fully discuss, but.
Uh, Councilmember Grant had her hand up.
Mm-hmm.
Did we run over you? Yeah, well, it, that.
I kind of think the use and accountability policies for something like a Bearcat is something I'd be interested in knowing more about.
Got him.
Um, and then with the public safety study, that would sort of like hone the point for residents if it is truly a need or not. So I don't really see waiting until it's finished on an item like that being a bad idea.
What were you at, what were you stating, that it was a good idea to wait for the end of the PSST study or not?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
On the Bearcat, yeah.
Catch it. Uh, guess what?
Is it my turn again?
Get in there.
I don't know, so annoying tonight, okay. So I'm a council member with very unique experience to this type of thing, because I worked at a police department for a decade. Took a picture of you and I sent it to Nate Tarver.
Oh, right.
Okay, so seizure funds for me mean something different than to, I know what some other people feel, um. So this money is not just, oh, they have a trunk full of cash, I mean, sometimes that's the case and you only get a portion of it. But a lot of the times it's seized property, et cetera. To get that through the system, you have to repeatedly like, because we did this with stuff that we had, you, you reach out to them, you have to do all these things, you have to prove that, you have to take it to court, a judge has to sign off on it, give the property over to you, and then usually put it on like propertyroom.com or something, and then you collect those funds when these things sell. So there's a big process that goes into getting it, it's not just, ha ha, we got your stuff, and now we're just gonna, you know, eBay it, or anything like that. So having said that, is there a way that we could maybe get a list so everyone could see? Because I know every check I deposited, um, into our accounts, is there a way that we can see where all this money comes from? So it's not like your next door neighbor.
I want to defer to my SIS, SIS guys, but, uh, but I would say a lot of it is currency and not taking and selling, but I would defer to my guys that.
And even with that, there's a paper trail of you get this much, because we had like a forty thousand and we got like seventy-eight percent of it back. You know, I mean, so there's a paper trail for all this money comes from, so I think if council maybe could see that, I think that would maybe make some people feel better to see that it's not, we're just robbing people and picking pockets and.
Captain Hopkins and Lance, if you'll be one of you, be free to answer.
So it's almost, I think it's almost all currency, um, and it's, uh, the document that that's managed in would have to be heavily redacted because it's got lots of, uh, personal information.
Person, right.
Information in it, but yeah, we, we have a document that we, we're tracking all this, and then of course, all that's through the courthouse, through the court system as well, there's all those public records as well.
Right.
To see the, how the disbursements go.
Yeah, so I think if we could get something like that, I don't, I mean, that's a big, maybe a big turnaround, I don't know. But I think maybe that would, Chief Foster's on it right now, he's just over there.
Your wishes are command.
Working.
May take a little bit of time.
Right. I think that would be really important for people to see. And then also with it, there's state statutes that are very, very specific, you can only buy equipment or do training and all that type of thing, so we can't, like, oh, I would love to put it all the sidewalks, you know, naturally, but you can't. So there's very specific things to law enforcement that you can only use it for. So there's very specific things to law enforcement that you can only use it for. So if we don't spend it on things that we prioritize and think that are essential for our community, then it literally just sits there. And that's the way.
Councilman Reforman, the patented answer that I think city managers and finance directors would, would offer in virtually any situation would be our fiduciary responsibilities to preserve the general fund. And that means to preserve your discretionary budget for things that may not have other funding sources available. So if you ask a finance director, you ask a city manager, from which bucket should we buy these things? If there is a bucket other than the general fund, we will always recommend, other than the general fund, to give you the flexibility in the future for those very coveted general fund discretionary dollars. So that's, that's what you would hear, and I think if you called any city and asked them, they would say preserve the general fund first.
Sure.
And, you know, look for those non-discretionary dollars that can only be used for those purposes, go there first.
Right, so mayor, if you're looking for an answer, I'm fine going forward with seizure funds. If the majority of council feels that we need to look elsewhere, I'm fine with that too, just to move this forward, so.
Right. Councilmember Torquay.
Just to clarify your position here, so you want to break up the rescue vehicle and the associated training into two separate resolutions?
So keep those two items in one resolution, and then the rest of the items in another. So two total resolutions.
I'm okay with the funding source either way, but Darrell, maybe this is a question for you. How would this slow down the process if they were broken up into two separate resolutions? Would, would we speed through each one? Because my understanding with my constituents, the majority of my constituents want this to pass out the door, they see the need, we've discussed this, considering the Beverager House incident in Ward Five, like I said, it was a mile away from my own house. So would the discussion here, break it up or to keep it together here, who makes that determination? Because I would prefer to keep it together under one resolution and get it passed, still have the public comments, I think we should have the, the public chime in on this, I think it's very important, the transparency part of it. So that's my, my position is that I, I feel that the majority of the constituencies that I represent and the folks I have spoken with would prefer to see this pass under one resolution to get it done, because it's, it's all, it all falls under public safety, and I don't see the, I don't see the need to break it up.
But it's not your constituents that make the call, it's council. And I think it will go down if it's all together.
We break it up?
If it breaks up, it's
Yeah. Council consensus tonight will tell us if it's one resolution or two.
We decide, not the constituents.
My intent would be for them both to come on the same agenda.
Okay.
So they would come one after another, and then we could vote on each of those resolutions.
It's political move, it's more favored.
So not, not trying, I'm not trying to slow down the process of moving these items forward, I'm just trying to allow an opportunity for residents to talk specifically to the items that I, the item that I've heard the most about.
Well, no, I, I see your point, and I see your point too, Councilman Forman. You know, pros and cons, it can go either way, I think, but, you know, you've been on council longer than I have, whatever the fastest way
The rest will pass.
To get, get it passed.
The Bearcat, to be determined.
Well, that's the concern that, that we have, but, you know, if, if that's something that the council decides as a group here, I would prefer to see it under one, but if you guys decide to do it under two, I'm okay with that.
It has, it has some advantages going into, because it takes all the pressure off the gear list, that's huge. And, and we can talk about the one thing that seems to be troubling most people. And you know as well as I do, I'm 100% in favor of getting that, and, and that's our job, is to convince those that are not, so, anyway. Who was that?
Peacock's had his hand out a lot.
Holman came before Peacock.
Really, just touching on that same point, yeah, I think if you, if you keep them together, you run the risk of it all failing, but if we are able to parse things out in two packages, then I don't want to say guarantee the one passes, but that's, I know we've asked for these things multiple times, and I don't think we want to ask again, so let's, let's get those taken care of. And, you know, being a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy, I've seen the duct taped body armor, I've seen the shaky VHS camera on the bomb road, but I mean, these things are outdated, and they, they definitely need to be replaced. So I fully support whatever it takes to get us there, and I think breaking them out, that's a, that's a smart strategy.
Now, sorry.
Yeah. I do think separating would be a good idea, I think, based on the feedback I've received, all the other items, I don't think are going to, I haven't received any pushback against any of them. I would anticipate there probably wouldn't be many people coming to speak against the other items. And that one could probably go smoothly. The other item might have, will, will have more public interest, and it would probably be, make more sense for that to be its own item, so we can get that public comment, we can make our comments and our decisions about that item. And I think that would be the best way to, and I'm for putting them all at the same time, same meeting. And, and what I would add to with the forfeiture funds is I think, based on the feedback I've received, I've, for residents of Ward Seven, for example, I've had some that have told me they are in favor of this vehicle, but not using forfeiture funds for it. I've seen that in the other ward pages, under other posts by other council members, I've seen constituents responding from various political backgrounds, some that say, no, we don't need it at all, militarization, but several saying, I do, you know, maybe they should get that vehicle, but I don't like the idea of forfeiture funds for it. And if the city has, you know, surplus funding, maybe they should use that instead. So it's been mixed in regard to that. I think a lot of the pushback, not all, there's still going to be people opposed to it, I'm still going to keep thinking about this, regardless of which way we go, but I think there's a lot of folks, not using forfeiture funds would take out a lot of the pushback, in my opinion. There would be a lot of people that would not protest it if we were not using that specific funding source. So that could, just something for us to think about, that that could reduce some of the blowback that we're going to see and that we're going to receive. And I would like to see some options presented for fully funding it with other funding sources, for partially funding it with other funding sources. You know, maybe we can have the forfeiture, fully funding it with forfeiture, partially funding it with both, or other options, or fully funding it with other options. I would like to see some, see those, and then we can all think about that before we make a final decision. But I think that would be helpful. And I would just, lastly, I would say, I know that there is a process that's in place to get these funds, but I have experienced it firsthand. I've seen the lengths in which the district attorney in this county would go to keep someone's property, even after they've been found not guilty of criminal charges. And that process was several months long, and it was expensive to hire, to keep your attorneys on retainer, and keep going to hearings at district court, and then the Supreme Court, and then waiting for the Supreme Court. That's a lengthy process, and it's extremely expensive. Most of your average people are not going to fight forfeiture proceedings, because the cost of hiring an attorney to do it is more than the average that's taken nationwide. So it's a very complicated issue, forfeiture funds. It's not just drug money that's being used, that may be the most of it, that may be the vast majority, but it's not 100%. And it doesn't require a conviction or even charges for the government to take your property from you. It's happened in Cleveland County, our own district attorney has done it. So I just want us to think about that, and think about that as being a reason why people have concern about using those funds and the integrity of those funds.
Mayor Protam, in the absence, you get to call the next speaker.
Councilmember Graham.
Uh, just to that point about having to ask more than once, I don't think it's such a bad idea to wait until after the public safety study for that second part, instead of putting it both the same night, if you want to ask only once, that's it.
Is it me? Workers come home tonight?
Definitely.
I don't know who I need to talk to about it? Okay. Wow, okay, so if people are very concerned about the armored vehicle on seizure fund, what if we funded that general fund and the rest seizure fund?
Good with that. That, that, and that's the, the, the question to ask is how do we give Brenda what she needs to, to do that?
Totally good with that, let's roll.
We can't agendize a pick one.
What, right?
From what I'm hearing tonight, from those that have spoke that are supportive of using the seizure money, there are more than saying that than not. So it would probably get agendized with that as a funding source. If during the discussion, other things were presented, and council wanted, somebody wanted to make an amendment to change the funding source, that certainly can happen, and that would be voted on separately, and, and then if it passes, then you would vote it on it as amended. If it didn't pass, it would go back to the motion on the floor to use, to use seizure funds.
And if anyone made that motion, I would be fine with it.
Can we not identify two funding sources, since there'll be two items now?
Oh, we can, yes, for that, but if, say
So, and Madam Clerk, I'm
Should we do it just now?
I'm hearing consensus
We can't vote.
That the first resolution would be asset seizure money on everything except the armored vehicle and its training. A second resolution would be armored vehicle and its training, general fund.
Totally fine with that.
I, I see consensus.
I would like to have three
Options.
Funding options, because I might want to fund all of it with not forfeiture funds. So I'd like to have three options that myself or others may present as amendments, and we can see
Yes.
How it all falls.
Yep, we know how the agenda will be drafted, and then opportunities for amendments to that draft. Makes perfect sense.
I think Mr. Francis might have a comment on that.
Well, you just, as Brenda was saying, you can't agenda with three optional funding sources. You have to put something on the agenda.
I just want three options that
On the floor.
I may make as an amendment.
Two amendments.
Yeah, on the floor.
Or someone else may, but, so it wouldn't be on the agenda, but if staff can provide some options for funding.
The material will be available?
And if none of them are SaaS factor, then we won't propose any amendments, if, it could be a combination, not sure, but.
So, so what you, what you all are proposing, what I'm, what I'm understanding you to propose is, is, is two parts. One with all the gear, not, not the truck. And that would be seizure funds. And one with the truck and the training.
Training. Anything associated with it.
Everything associated with the truck, as a separate item from general fund.
Yes. As agendized, as agendized.
And you can amend it from the floor.
Yeah.
And, and we can amend, and that's, that's all, it just, how do we write it so that he can write it?
We got you covered.
Yeah. So we're good with that?
I think we're good. We have consensus.
Yep. It works.
All right.
Burt my elbow for that.
Well, that's all right, because we're fixing to adjourn. Is there anything else anybody wants to add?